Good afternoon. I will call to order the January 11, 2016, meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Cronzer, Magrino, Slack, Rockwell, and Gisselman. Our first item in business today is to approve the actions from the December 7, 2015 meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next item in business is to sort the agenda. We'll determine which items we will discuss, which will be on consent, and which will continue, which will be continued. The agendas, or hard copies of the agendas can be found in the hallway. So we'll start at the top of the agenda. And our first item of business is a comprehensive plan amendment pertaining to a very high-density residential land use category. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Let's see, someone, okay, we have a few people. So we'll discuss item number one. Item two is at 3200 Bryant Avenue South. That's a rezoning. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? All right, then we will discuss item two. Item three is DTLTL Ventures LLC at 41635th Avenue Southeast. That's a conditional use permit to allow recycling facilities, as well as a site plan. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item three? All right, we'll discuss item three. Moving along, item four is the AMP House at 3255 Garfield Avenue South. We will discuss that item, if there is anyone here for that. Item five is the DTATM variances at 510 and 640 South Fourth Street. That item will be continued to the January 25 meeting. Item six is the Block 68 North Office Building at 513 South Third Street. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item seven is at 3041 Holmes Avenue South. Several applications there for a new residential building. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item seven? Item seven, seeing no one, we will put that on consent. And then item eight is an apartment building at 11727th Avenue Southeast. Several applications there. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Item eight, seeing no one, we will put that on consent. So our amended agenda is as follows. We will discuss items one, two, three, and four. We'll continue item five to the January 25 meeting, and items six, seven, and eight will be on consent. May have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda. The Committee of the Whole last met back on December 10. And Commissioner Slack, do you have an update?
Thank you, President Brown. At the December 10 Committee of the Whole meeting, we had six different presentations. The first project that we reviewed was Second Avenue North and Van White Memorial Boulevard Redevelopment Plan, and the recommended motion was to approve the staff report that the item was consistent with the Minneapolis plan. Items two, three, and four were all land sales. Those land sales occur at 3110 Lindell Avenue North, 3116 Lindell Avenue North, 617 Lowry Avenue North, 3117 Sixth Street North, 3113 Sixth Street North, as well as a land sale at 2806 Park Avenue South. And then, last but not least, a land sale at 33rd Street South, which is the Niklet Block Hotel. The recommended motion there was to approve the staff report that each of those items was consistent with the Minneapolis plan. Item number five was a modification number 125 to the Common Development Redevelopment Plan and Common TIF Plan, and modification number one to the Lake and Niklet Redevelopment Plan. And the motion there was to approve staff report that the item was consistent with the Minneapolis plan. And then, last but not least, we were presented with three appointments to the Board of Adjustments. And so the recommended motion was that the City Council approve the following appointments to the Board of Adjustment for terms to expire December 31, 2018. And those individuals are Eric Johansson, Richard Sandberg, and Amy Thompson.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Slack. I will take that as a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. That is items six, seven, and eight. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item six, seven, and eight? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and may have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on those items? Seeing none, all in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. We'll start with item one, which is a comprehensive plan amendment related to a very high-density land use category. Staff, it's Hyla Mays.
Good evening. I am here to speak on the Very High Density Comprehensive Plan Amendment, as shown in the packet before you. The start of this amendment process was back last spring. There's been some discussion for some time about our comprehensive plan and about the update process. We are still planning to do a fuller update, but this is bringing forward, for priority consideration, a small and as narrowly as we can defined amendment to the plan to address a specific issue. As you know, in the existing comprehensive plan, there are land use designation categories that are tied to our land use features. Low, medium, high, and very high residential are different categories of growth and development. They are identified in our plan related to the land use features as shown on this map. You don't, can't see all the details, but they include guidance for the areas known as growth centers and activity centers, which are guided for the very highest density categories. This is sort of given as a general policy statement, and the guidance for very high-density residential is identified by a range of dwelling units. Discussion this past spring turned to the fact that our plan as written has an inconsistency in the language. This has come up before, but it's been sort of brought to our attention by a couple of recent development projects, what I'll describe. As currently written, there's two different references to the very high-density residential category. One listed as the category having densities of 120 units per acre or higher, and in another location, it's listed as 120 to 200 dwelling units per acre, having an upper limit of 200. This inconsistency hasn't really brought a lot, gotten a lot of attention or needed to be addressed, except to the effect that we are seeing higher and higher density projects. The impetus for this was to look, was a discussion around about half a dozen different projects that have been considered in recent months and past years, though, that have been pushing up against the 200 dwelling units per acre. If you have questions about how that upper limit was originally selected, part of the answer is that the Met Council does require an upper limit. They sort of and up to allow more discretion. They don't feel comfortable with that. They want a number. And at the time this plan was written, 200 seemed like a good upper limit. Development community since then has shown us that there are a lot of interesting projects that architecturally work and work functionally, could be in line with many other city policies, but do significantly exceed 200 units per acre. The combination of discussion about the fact that we are very, it's very possible for projects, and indeed several have exceeded the 200 units per acre, and the inconsistency in how it's stated in the plan have called the need for a specific text amendment to the comprehensive plan. The amendment itself is fairly specific. I will put up on the screen what it's, the language that we're considering. Currently, the guidance for growth centers and activity centers, maybe you can't read that, but they are, have, it's sort of a one-size-fits-all guidance in terms of the upper limit for density for all of those categories. The very high-density category applies to our growth centers, of which we have four: University of Minnesota, Downtown Core, Bass Creek Valley, and the Wells Fargo Hospitals area, which are indicated on our maps as just of stars. We do not have specific boundaries. And activity centers, which include a lot of different locations throughout the city. The very highest-density category currently applies to all of them. But as we talked about this amendment, about putting an increased upper limit, a more consistent upper limit, the distinction was made to narrow it to a smaller area, to say not all activities in the city are appropriate for this level of the very highest density. So as written, it makes a distinction to say, yes, all four growth centers and the activity centers in proximity to them. And they are called out by name in this document. Specifically, they are Cedar Riverside, Dinkytown, East Hennepin, Mill District, Stadium Village, and Warehouse District. So that's activity centers that are close to or in proximity to our four growth centers. That is basically all of them. The question that comes to mind for a lot of folks is, does that mean that this applies equally to all of those and to all circumstances in those? We know already that that's not true. One thing that is very helpful in guiding the policy for our growth centers and activity centers is that we have small area plans adopted for basically all of them. As the small area plans are designed to do, they have more specific guidance in the comprehensive plan as a whole, and so they provide over and above the general guidance in the comp plan, additional guidances to where density will be appropriate. Listed in the staff report is a list of many recent small area plans, and as you'll see, every small, every growth center and every activity center has at least one recent plan that has been done. I think all of them are within the past, I don't know, maybe seven or eight years, and most of them are within the past five years. So they're fresh and current. They reflect input from the neighborhood and the community, and they indeed provide more rigorous guidance than the comp plan as a whole. Indeed, I think there's a good case to be made for saying that this comprehensive plan amendment allows to help ensure that the comprehensive plan itself isn't more restrictive than the small area plans are, which already have much more specific and location-guided policy for growth and density. So that is to say that this amendment would not override those, override the guidance in the small area plans. They are included in this package. You will also find the future land use map for each of those that shows where the densities are appropriate. That is sort of a general overview. I do want to call out one particular thing. There's been a lot of comments that have come in the past few days, and some of them have been related to recent development proposals. Looking at the timeframe for this, this was proposed back in May. It did take a while to get to it in front of you because we needed to have extensive comment and discussion with the Met Council during the interim period. The Council is very concerned to make sure that we have our comprehensive plan is consistent with their regional plans, and that back-and-forth discussion took a number of months. So just, I guess that's for reference to say that the current development proposals that are before us, the fact that they may or may not coincide with this is somewhat coincidental. This amendment was planned well before the ones that have been considered right now. So it's not, it was not done by the city in direct reaction to the ones now, but rather to past ones that have been done over the past months and years that have approached and exceeded that 200 dwelling units per acre limit. It is also not, again, not overruling any other portion of the plan of policy that the city has adopted that would be more restrictive. The Met Council's review is still, has to, since this is a comprehensive plan amendment, that means that it still has to go to them after the Planning Commission and zoning, assuming that it's approved by City Council and Planning Commission. It will still have to go to them for a future and final review, but we've spent some time doing homework with them to feel that they're comfortable with that, so we would not have to sort of do a lot of back-and-forth after this process is done. Just one last reference point related to the small area plans. The map you're looking here, again, it's not terribly readable, but the Downtown Core area, the core area around the growth centers is right here. And as you can see, that area has pretty solid and detailed policy guidance. Again, this does not replace it. And I should say, it also does not overrule any of the guidance in the preservation, heritage preservation overlays in historical districts within this area, because, as you know, several of these activity centers also have historical districts. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions.
Right. Commissioner Bender, do you have a question for staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I wondered if you could talk about how the density interacts with the bulk regulations that we have. So my understanding here is that we're regulating the inside of buildings, right? So how many units per acre are happening within the building envelope, and then that we're separately regulating the building envelope through our bulk and size guidance. Does this, since it's in the comprehensive plan, does our density categories inform the bulk regulations, or is it really kind of a separate issue within our policy framework? That's one question. And then a second question, and I don't expect you to have the specifics, but I wonder if you could talk a bit about how, if there are other areas in the city that were considered where you might see bulk requirements already that would allow this kind of density, but that were not chosen to be included? And then I'll just comment briefly that, you know, I think, I think it's reasonable to say there are some parts of the city where we think it's appropriate to have just density even in of itself, number of people per acre, right? But I do think, generally speaking, you know, for already having the bulk of a building, in my mind, there are also a lot of benefits to having a lot, you know, a high acre, people per acre within those buildings, relatively speaking. And you see, you see beautiful buildings that are actually pretty moderate in scale that have a surprisingly high unit-per-acre density. So San Francisco, for example, all of those beautiful six-story buildings have densities that would really surprise people, I think. It's, but they don't have parking, so they're not wasting space on cars. They have 100, 100 or more units per acre. So I just wonder if you could talk through some of those issues. So number one was, are we using density as a sort of, how are we using it relative to bulk regulations? And then talking more about if there are any other areas of the city that were considered for inclusion and that were not included?
Sure. That's a very good point, which I probably should have highlighted. This does not impact or override our bulk regulations. And as the Planning Commission is aware, there have been some recent changes to sort of move the regulation more away from the units-per-acre standard and more towards the bulk standard as a way of measuring it, because it is a better indicator in a lot of ways of the impact, especially the visual impact of building on a community. There are some extremely dense projects, for instance, I know the, in the Ventura Village area, some of those older, small brick apartment buildings are remarkably dense because they have very small units. So it is often deceptive, can be more dense than one would think based upon, because of unit size. So this does not impact those, and indeed, I think the general thinking is probably, as we are working on the comprehensive plan amendment overall, we, there is going to be more and more a focus on bulk as opposed to units-per-acres account. We are not tackling that whole question for the comp plan because we have our upcoming comp plan amendment to take it on a larger scale. So in some ways, this is effectively an interim because we will be addressing all of these in more detail in the near future. In terms of other areas, we did, we did talk about sort of, generally speaking, the activity centers as a whole. We're, there's not to say that they couldn't be considered in the future. The way, I should also clarify, the way this is written, activity centers that are not explicitly called out here would be, would be at the 200 units per acre, the sort of, I want to say the default setting, that the already present limit would be applying to those. So it's not reducing or really changing it for other areas in the city. I think the idea was that the focus on the Downtown Core, focus on the major transit lines, and the major density that is around the key growth center areas. Again, more, more exploration, it could be a broader area, but that seemed to be a good starting place, so.
All right. Are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing at this time. And just so I have a sense, how many of you are here to speak on this item? We have a handful. You can decide among yourselves who goes first. Maybe the, maybe we can start over at this side of the room. And please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And since we do have a number of speakers, I'll just ask that you're mindful of not repeating things that other people have said, and keep your remarks relatively concise. Go ahead.
Since this is my first time at any meeting like this, I don't know what the protocol is, but my name is Ron Van Tyne, and I live at 45 University Avenue Southeast in Minneapolis, 55414. And I've been a resident there for nine years. My observation, which I'd like you to consider, is I think this is an unwise, this change is unwise public policy. To begin with, it's a huge change, going from 200 units to 800 in one fell swoop, that's a multiple of four times, to cure of an inconsistency where something says 120 in one place and 200. You could easily change the 120 to 200, so it was the same in both places as opposed to addressing it with a magnitude of four. But more importantly than that, I think, the, my concern is including all of these activity centers in the same category as the Downtown Core of Minneapolis, because these are largely residential neighborhoods. And I live in one of those residential neighborhoods. We know it is Niklet Island East Bank, and the plan is called East Hennepin. And we're a low to mid-rise neighborhood that is between two other low-to-mid-rise neighborhoods. And we are also very much in the, in the center of the St. Anthony Falls Historic District. It kind of staggers the imagination of those of us who live there to think about buildings of the scale that would be authorized here. And let me use as an illustration, a proposal, and this is not to talk about that proposal, good or bad, but I just know some dimensions. So a proposal called a lattice 40-story building, it would have between 240 and 290 residential units. If you take that number of units in 40 stories and assume the same distribution of one, two, and three bedrooms to get to 800, a density of 800 units, you'd have a building on that little corner, which is only one acre. In fact, it's .8829 of one acre. You'd have a building of 110 to 133 stories. Now, on its face, that seems pretty ludicrous, and to, to place into a statute something that would allow that sort of nonsensical result, I think doesn't, doesn't make sense and doesn't reflect well upon us. There was conversation about how this is designed mainly to cure an inconsistency in, in the comprehensive plan. I think by curing this small inconsistency, 120 versus 200 units, we would be creating a much greater inconsistency. And I would direct your attention to Section 10.1 of the comprehensive plan. It's very short, so I'll just read it so you don't have to Google it. Policy 10.1, promote building designs and heights that enhance and complement the image and form of the downtown skyline, providing transition to the edges of downtown, and protect the scale and quality in areas of distinctive physical or historical character. Protect the scale and quality in areas of distinctive physical or historical character. The first subsection, there are only three, says, quote, "Concentrate the tallest buildings in the Downtown Core." Now, I don't personally have any quarrel with the 800. I think that's, that size is probably a generation away in terms of construction in our community. If it belongs anywhere, it belongs in the Downtown Core. It does not belong in activity centers, particularly such as the East Hennepin. And 10.1 also talks about the importance of preserving and enhancing public view corridors on natural features like water bodies. I would assume the Mississippi River qualifies as a water body, and trying to, to not pack a lot of 40, 50, 60-story buildings, 30-story buildings in that area would be desirable. Lastly, and finally, I would suggest that, I have a sense from conversations with various people, that the 800 is kind of a plug number. It's designed to set a standard so high that you just don't have to worry about anybody arguing about whether or not a project meets it or not, that it would be extremely rare, at least in our lifetimes, that there's going to be a project of that scale. Therefore, that eliminates one topic for discussion in the neighborhood as to what is or is not appropriate in that particular neighborhood. And again, I'm talking neighborhood as opposed to downtown. The other thing that concerns me is there has been no discussion about what's the ripple effect of increasing this limit? What other obligations or requirements that now exist on a developer or, or a neighborhood or benefit one or the other might be affected by this change? I understand, I don't claim to be authoritative on it, that it would eliminate the requirement for most developments, maybe all, to be obligated under state law to do an environmental awareness worksheet. Well, that very much works to the, to the benefit of the developer. It doesn't do anything for the neighbors who want to understand, you know, what is the impact on traffic, on pollution, on sun and shadow, et cetera, of our neighborhood of having a building of a particular size or density. I think those are all really important considerations for the people who live in these neighborhoods. And so I would urge you to consider splitting out activity centers from the Downtown Core in any kind of increase, and, and suggest that an appropriate density for the activity centers would be something close to the upper limit that currently exists, 200. So there is still a basis for discussion and reflection on all the ramifications that projects of that size or greater may entail. So thank you for your patience.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Dale Aaron. I live at 110 Bank Street Southeast, 55414. That is also the East Bank neighborhood. Ron has said very well, I think, what we're thinking about some of the details of this. The questions that I would ask specifically of the Commission are the purported reasons to do this. There were two named, I think, in what I read, which is, we must have, the goal is to resolve existing inconsistencies in the existing buildings in existing area. And then, secondly, to more accurately reflect the city's goals for the growth and achievable density limits for that category. My question would be, first of all, the existing inconsistency seems to me can easily be taken care of by writing and passing an exception for buildings that need it. That should not be much of a problem. My concern about the additions primarily relate to the fact that I am under the understanding that a new comprehensive plan is under development. You are, my point would be that you seem to be already putting into ink something that would be part of the new comprehensive plan that has not been considered by anybody. And nobody really knows the implication of this 800 rule on what that comprehensive plan would be. So I think it's premature to do that part. Secondly, the amendment clearly implies that SAPs are the noted guideline, and that's why you probably, we were told you did not have to worry about that. My question is, how does the SAP relate to historic guidelines? Some are new, some are older. If you do live in a historic district, how does this amendment apply to it? It's just, there is absolutely no indication. Finally, I do think it is good, Ron talked about the alatus. I'm more interested in buildings in general. If you pick any site, Superior Plating, for example, five acres, you know, does this clearly mean 4,000 people could live there? We have no comparison when you say 800. I don't think any neighborhood, anybody has any idea what that means. So I would ask you to reconsider that. I would, my only suggestion is to take care of the exceptions as they stand. Do a much more modest, as Ron said, change to continue our development. And then particularly, I would also say, pay more attention to not dealing with the activity centers right now until the comprehensive plan is formed, and also how are the historic standards going to fit into that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Barbara Khan. I live at 423 Seventh Street Southeast. I'm here as a member of Preserve Historic Dinkytown and as a resident of Marcy Homes. I'm very concerned about this amendment. The situation- The situation that is proposed, the situation that the amendment proposes to resolve is that there's one place in the comprehensive plan text that does not give a limit for the very high-density category and others where the upper limit is set to 200 units per acre. Densities up to 800 units per acre are being proposed as being achievable and consistent with city goals and policies, as my predecessors in this speaking have mentioned. The intent is to address this issue before review of the comprehensive plan. The staff report states, "If this is not remedied, it could create an administrative burden for the development projects that the city would otherwise support." It appears that this really is a major change. It quadruples the density potential of proposed projects and claims that this density has proven to be consistent with the development of vital and livable communities, particularly in the core areas of Minneapolis. As Hyla has said, the comprehensive plan requires the city to develop small-area plans for the activity centers. The purpose of those small-area plans is to mitigate impacts to community character and provide further guidance as to how policy designations are to be applied. What is happening, however, is that the density designations are used to override the provisions of the small-area plans for character, scale, and livability. And what is that administrative burden? Is it land-use committees and neighborhood organizations who would contest such development density to ensure vitality and livability of their neighborhoods? What is equally curious is the proposed targets being called out in the amendment. It includes the oldest and most historically significant neighborhoods in the city and two neighborhoods that have been historically designated. Does this amendment override that designation? And for Dinkytown, how does it affect the two half-blocks that weren't historically designated? And does it mean that there was a potential of 1,600 more people living in Dinkytown? It appears that this amendment is jumping the gun to put developers out ahead of the public comprehensive plan update discussion without providing guidance or standing for existing neighborhood small-area plans, nor for the comprehensive plan values that include preservation. This is not a growth-with-preservation strategy. The amendment upends and prematurely undercuts any opportunity for a balanced policy decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Good evening. Jeff Wright. I live at 178 Bank Street Southeast. It's the Lord Square Town Home Development. Been there about four years. I've been a city resident for 38 years. I've owned five houses in a variety of different neighborhoods. I love the city. I care about it. I'm not here to complain. But I want to at least address my personal objection to this amendment. At the risk of repeating what Ron and others have said, 800 units per acre seems ludicrous and a dramatic and unwarranted jump in density. Those of us who live in that part of the city are not against reasonable development. We like what's happening now, apparently what's happening at the NICE site as opposed to what was going to be happening, an incredibly out-of-scale and out-of-historic norm type of monstrosity. It looks like we're going to have something reasonable in the eight or nine-story range. I hope that's true. It is a historic district. It is a low-to-mid-rise district. Opening up the opportunity for giant high-rise buildings in what is a historic and low-rise neighborhood seems crazy. Again, we're not against reasonable development. Who knows what the unintended consequences are of throwing that many people into that smaller footprint? Traffic, environmental, crime? We don't know, and I don't think anybody knows. And I think that slowing this process down and taking a more thoughtful approach instead of a railroading approach is probably warranted. I'm not against density, per se, but there does seem to be a density-at-all-cost, you know, the quality of life thrown at the altar of density for the sake of density. And I don't quite know why massive, high, super-ultra-high density is in and of itself a goal. So, those people who've lived in this part of the city for a long time, Ron's been there nine years, didn't move there to move into 40 and 50 and 112-story high-rise units. Not that we can control everything that's happening and our quality of life isn't, you know, we're in a community, but I think some balance is warranted, given what I think is kind of a shocking proposal in this amendment. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next speaker. Please state your name and address.
My name is Nathan Duggan, and my wife and five-year-old daughter and I reside at 110 Bank Street in southeast Minneapolis. Thank you, Chairman Brown, for the opportunity to speak tonight to the committee. As a resident of the Nicolet Island East Bank neighborhood, I'm writing today, or speaking today, excuse me, to express my opposition to this proposed amendment related to very high density. And I specifically would like to call out a paragraph in Ms. Mays's memo to the City Planning Commission to you all on December 10, 2015, where she stated the following, quote, "This amendment is not an attempt to revisit the full scope of guidance for densities and land-use features that will be undertaken as part of the full comprehensive plan update, which will be underway soon. The intent is to have a fairly minor amendment at present to address current issues in the near term with a more comprehensive review to come. As a result of this, it has been determined that the inconsistency in the comprehensive plan needs to be addressed. If this is not remedied, it could create, as others have stated, an administrative burden for development projects that the city would otherwise support." Following are just some of the comments and concerns that I have about this overreach from my perspective. I am deeply concerned and opposed to this getting out in front of the comprehensive review process. And with all due respect, this is far more than an inconsistency of language. This is about fundamentally remaking established neighborhoods and creating, quite frankly, what I would call a boondoggle for developers. I'm not exactly sure how this can be classified as a fairly minor amendment when you're proposing a shift of 200 development units per acre to 800 development units per acre, as currently defined in these activity growth centers, which, many of which are established neighborhoods and in some cases, as already, as previously has been stated, historically designated neighborhoods. I don't know what issues are so pressing that they need to be addressed in the, quote, "near term," nor do I know what administrative burden for development projects this could create for the city if this is not modified immediately ahead of the comprehensive plan update. And to my knowledge, none, and I mean none of the neighborhood associations or residents of the neighborhoods that will be significantly impacted by this amendment had have, have had any opportunity to discuss or debate this proposed amendment. And again, as to reiterate, I'm not sure what issues related to historic, or what about issues related to historic preservation, neighborhood livability. This amendment would significantly impact both. It would appear this proposal is singularly focused on issues related to density and population goals for the city, and to that end, creating an easier path for developers who want to build very high-density projects with little regard or even disregard for current residents. Exhibit A is the NICE project. While the neighborhood and the city were initially supportive of this project, the neighborhood was in strong opposition and played a major role in the current shift from 30 stories to a six-story project, a height enassing that is much more appropriate for the St. Anthony Falls Historic District. You suggest also, Ms. Mays, doesn't her memo, that the city is missing out on multiple opportunities to develop projects of this scope. However, given the recent proposed United Properties Tower on the Nicolet Hotel Block, that it was recently reduced in scope, I find it hard to believe that there is a backlog of very high-density projects that would warrant passing this proposed amendment. I would encourage the Planning Commission to table this amendment and look at it more comprehensive and let the neighborhoods debate it as they should be doing from this day forward. Thank you for your opportunity.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Yes, please. Go ahead, and please state your name and address for the record.
Chair Brown and members of the commission, thanks for this opportunity to comment. I'm Jan Warlock. I'm Director of Local Government and Community Relations for the University of Minnesota Twin Cities Campus from the Office of the President. I want to say that it's a great advantage to the University of Minnesota to have the heart of our campus in this vibrant city and in this thriving metropolitan area. The four of the activity centers that are under consideration in the proposal are in the university campus area communities. And though our campus is part of what's designated as a growth center in the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan, the market demand for new high-density development will not be a result of enrollment growth at the Twin Cities Campus of the University of Minnesota. Excuse me. The level of enrollment at our campus has been fairly flat for the last several years, and significant growth is not anticipated in the foreseeable future. But having said that, I understand, we understand, that the communities near campus are attractive places for residential, commercial, and industrial growth. In the last few years, the city has permitted the development of over 1,000 new housing units in the campus area, making it, I think, the second-fastest area for residential growth in the city after downtown. I may have that wrong, and I hope Hyla corrects me if I am. But while the population is growing, the public infrastructure has not kept up. With several thousand new residents in Dinkytown, Stadium Village, and on the West Bank, there has not been a commensurate increase in public safety resources that are allocated to this area. The University of Minnesota has a significant commitment to public safety. We maintain a police department at this campus with 50 licensed officers. Actually, we're at 48 today. We're going to 50. The jurisdiction for the University of Minnesota Police is the campus, but more than one-third of the incidents to which the University of Minnesota Police respond are from the communities off-campus. We ask that, as the city considers a change to the comprehensive plan that would allow extra-high-density residential development, that there be a commensurate commitment to increased public safety services where the cumulative population growth is outstripping the police resources. We have great personnel in the Second Precinct and in the First Precinct, Minneapolis Police Department. In the Second Precinct, they are scrambling to keep up with the need for public safety services in northeast and southeast Minneapolis. But we have commercial nodes that would be, that are part of these activity centers where the character of those areas has changed a great deal over the last 10 years, becoming increasingly entertainment centers and places where there are lots of licenses to operate till 3:00 a.m. And then you add on that several hundred new residents in each of those places, and it significantly changes the character. So, it's good to be in a growth center, but we need the public infrastructure for public safety and a good quality of life. Thanks for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you. And next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Victor Granch. I live at 132 Bank Street Southeast, a neighbor of one of my colleagues over at Lord Square. And I'm here to speak in favor of the amendment. And I always like to try and move things to numeric basis, because we've heard a lot of commentary, and unfortunately, you're not going to be, I have copies here if you wanted to see this, is that basically, there's a lot of comment about 800, as though every building is going to be 800 dwelling units per acre. I think, as I tabulated here, the existing buildings in the neighborhood, they range in, you know, per acre, the highest, Larive, okay, at 265, which would, of course, would be illegal under the current, I'm not sure how Larive got approved. And the next highest one is Pinnacle Falls, both very tall buildings in the Historic District, and at 157. But on average, we have only 74 residents or dwelling units per acre. And if you take the population of, the census says that the average residence per dwelling unit is 2.25 in 2015 estimate, and if you look at our neighborhood in Nicolet East Bank, it's 1.75. So, I kind of took a split and said, if we assume there are two people per unit, which actually is a little bit high in the neighborhood in the current demographic, that would be, you know, 1,400 residents, okay? And if you look and say, if you, so you'd have 147 residents per acre, so this is not, even though it has some very tall buildings in the Historic District, which have basically nothing to do with the Historic District, that even if you look at all of the rental units and everything else, it's still only 74 units, sort of, per acre is at that density. And if you look at the new developments that are being proposed, there's three that are actually at least, suppose, one is the Alatus Tower, which, of course, is actually lower density than Larive, at 263 per acre. Superior Plating is actually relatively low. It's only 74 per acre because it's a five-acre site and there's only 280 units of housing on it. And US Bank Mortenson is 257, which, again, is about a 28- or 29-story building, at least in this current proposal. So, all in all, and then these new projects, I think are more typical, what we would see is the idea that if this is raised to 800, that somehow or another, every building is going to be 100 stories tall, is simply not true. There are market realities in what you can do. It's also worth pointing with regard to city resources, is that the current condominiums in the East Bank pay a little over $4.5 million in 2014. Decent estimate, according to the Assessment Department, after talking to these things, is the new developments would pay $6.5 million. So, if there are demands on city services, on police services, there's resources to pay for those, and that's what the resources should be done for. So, I think that the current limit actually is restrictive, although 800 is pretty far out of line. But I think that no building in our neighborhood is going to be built to that size. I would like to make a couple other comments. Ron, by time, wasn't here at the time, but when Cobalt was proposed, all of the things that are being said now about density were said about Cobalt, all of them. It's too big, it's too glassy, it's too everything. And both the developer and the association persevered, and it's a nice building, and the people who live there love it. And I think that's true of new buildings. I think it's going to be. The second thing is, it's worth pointing out that Ron said that, well, new buildings shouldn't interfere with views of the river. Well, Winslow House, Larive, and Pinnacle Falls completely dominate the view of the river from the neighborhood side, okay? And that they were all approved somehow or another by the HPC back in 1980. And so, I think that this actually makes things more consistent so that we can deal with developers on a reasonable basis as the neighborhood goes forward. I'd also just make a note that I think that density is the crucial, it's the hallmark, it's the foundation on which you build sustainability. Our neighborhood has 800 buses a day go across the Hennepin Avenue and Central Avenue bridges to all points of the compass. We're within walking distance of practically everything that's worth walking to in Minneapolis. We have a thriving, or budding and increasingly thriving retail district where you can walk to things. Putting more people where they're in a position to do that is the foundation on which we're going to have sustainable growth in Minneapolis and live lightly on the environment. So, I encourage you to pass this amendment. Thank you. By the way, I would like to emphasize, I'm here in my personal capacity, not as I usually am as President of the Nicolet East Bank Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Katie Bell, and I am at 629 Jefferson Street Northeast in the San Anthony East neighborhood with my husband. And I'm here to sort of express that I also have concerns about density, which, right now, living in Ward III and in Minneapolis, can feel a little bit like you've got kind of a small voice. So, I appreciate you all being here and having this at pretty easy hours to get off work, because this is my first council meeting, and I'm excited to be here. So, I would say I'm a classic urbanite. I, you know, I live a mile, two miles outside of my workplace downtown, so I walk there. It feels a little unsafe on a bike going through the downtown itself, although I certainly bike a lot. I did 200-mile bike rides this summer, and I both bike to the ice cream store and bike for sports. And I also own a car, and so does my husband, because it's, you know, especially as a woman in town, you just don't always feel safe, you know, having a good time enjoying the amenities of the city after a certain time after dark. And I think, you know, a lot of people I know, you know, I'd say, probably even in the high-density things, they own a car, they have a place to park it that's appropriate, but people bring cars into town when they live here. And so, I have concerns about this whole density thing in Minneapolis, especially with how choked off the east side is by natural and man-made features. We've got on the west and south side, the Mississippi River, and the bridges are the choke points. We've got railroads going every which way. We've got the University of Minnesota, which is just kind of built the way it is. We've got I-35 on the east. And so, the idea of putting more people in a place where you really can't get very many more people in and out of it at any given time seems a little questionable. more people in and out of it at any given time seems a little questionable. And similarly, the infrastructure, water, parking, you know, because people do have parties and restaurants do attract visitors from the suburbs where across town, hey, this is the best place in town. And I go to the Loring Pasta Bar all the time, you know, and I know a lot of people from the suburbs do, too. And so, and similar, basically, I mean, Elliott Park, I think, is a good example of where I don't want to live. That's fine if you do, but it's not what I see the East Bank as being for. The East Bank, to me, seems more like an urban neighborhood, which I saw in the fine print of the North Loop's Small Area Plan. The multimillion-dollar condos by the West River Road got to be called Urban Neighborhood or something like that. And I feel like that's at stake here, and there's a lot of places that do have that urban neighborhood feel. I'm not, I don't feel safe riding a bike down Portland. I know it's a big Bike Boulevard, and people do, but it's also, when I think of it, I think of newspaper reports of people dying on a bike. I'd like to not see that happen in these places that are more spacious and easy to feel like are a neighborhood. I'm also concerned about the way, sort of, old skyscraper condos degrade, and big commercial developments can degrade faster than smaller-density things. When my mom moved to town, she ended up moving half a block down the road from us, also into duplex. But she was looking at condos, and it was striking the difference between some of the 30-, 40-year-old condo skyscrapers and, like, the brand-new ones, and just this sense that they, I mean, they were fine, but this sense that slowly people were starting to lose interest in them, and I don't think that happens with a 30-year-old house, a 60-year-old house, 100-year-old house, or even some of them just more moderate, easier-to-rehab as a whole kinds of buildings that we have. And I think even, you know, just newer, smaller condos are going to hold their structural interest to the people who live there and stay maintained as a whole. And I would hate to see the neighborhood devalue as just its buildings' value, because we just put in too many things that the developers turned over and left the landlords and the people of the neighborhood to deal with the devaluation of. So, yeah, I guess that was everything I had in my notes. Thank you so much. I'd really hate to see the east side just become overcrowded and impossible to live in when, right now, it's very livable.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Jacob Fry. I'm the City Councilmember for the Third Ward, and I live at 316 East Hennepin, right in the neighborhood of where the majority of speakers hail from today. So, right now, we have an overarching debate in our city about the value of density versus the value of the status quo and remaining where we are right now. And I just want to make very, very clear that this particular text amendment has nothing to do with the proposed developments that are presently going up. We had talked earlier about perhaps proposing this text amendment at the time when the NICE development was a controversial development, and we decided, no, to hold it back. Well, now there's another development that's on the way, and if we withhold it again, then there will likely be another development down the road. And here's the point where I believe there's quite a bit of misinformation. Regardless of whether this text amendment goes through and is approved, there are still the mechanisms to oppose and completely oppose any of the developments that are now underway. We have a zoning code. They would have to go through, we'll use the Alatus Development, for example. The Alatus Development, which is at the Washburn McGreevy parcel, would have to go through a very significant variance, and I believe they would also need a conditional use permit. All of the arguments that people in the audience are presently making today, and rightfully so, can be made at a subsequent occasion when the developer requests any form of variance. The text amendment, on the other hand, it was brought to me to deal with inconsistencies that we had between our Comprehensive Plan as well as our zoning code. In our zoning code, and generally speaking at the city, we are now operating very much off of floor-area ratios, whereas this has a number of units per acre. Now, the number 800, which I know a lot of people have been focused on, is very much so an arbitrary number. We could say 700, 600, 500, 400, we could say 300. But again, none of that would change the underlying question, which is whether this particular developer or that particular developer should get a variance within our zoning code. So I don't feel that I should be here today, nor do I think it would be proper to either advocate nor oppose for this particular text amendment. But what I do want to say is that one thing has nothing to do with the other. There have been a series of developments just in the last few years that went beyond what would be considered very high-density by the Comprehensive Plan. Just to read through a couple of them, Stone Arch Apartments, Two Loring Park Apartments, Nikon Fifth, Suline City Apartments, which was the revamp of a historical structure, 600 Fifth Street North, City Place Lofts, Forum Arc, 301 Washington Apartments, and Corner Apartments. Not to mention Larive and Falls Pinnacle, which are in the Nicollet Island East Bank neighborhood, which already go beyond the present Comprehensive Plan. No matter what we do with this Comprehensive Plan, there are additional safeguards in place by which anyone in this audience or out in the general public can oppose a development figure. This is to reduce inconsistencies that we presently have. This is to eliminate the administrative burden for both our staff as well as private investments, and this is to create a really more streamlined process on the whole by which people can advocate or oppose any of the developments into the future.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Hung Russell. I live at 612 Fourth Street Southeast, which is in the Marcy Homes neighborhood. I was a member of the Marcy Homes Master Plan Update Steering Committee in 2012, or 13, excuse me. I'm also currently the co-chair of the Marcy Homes Land Use and Development Committee, as well as a member of the Board of Directors. I'm not here to speak in that capacity. The Neighborhood Association has not taken a formal stance on this particular issue, so I'm speaking personally. I would echo a number of the concerns that were stated by the earlier speakers, but I wanted to speak specifically about the inclusion of Dinkytown on the list in this amendment. Just last week, the Heritage Preservation Commission had a kickoff meeting with the outside consultants to start the whole design guidelines process for the Commercial Historic District in Dinkytown. And I sat in on that, and I just found it a little bit discombobulating to hear a discussion, very thoughtful discussion among the commissioners about the design guidelines and how it would speak to scale and bulk in regards to how the guidelines themselves would be crafted, knowing that this event was coming along. So it was the proverbial 800-dwelling-unit gorilla in the room while this whole discussion was happening. And so I went back to my experience of sitting with the Steering Committee for the Master Plan and how we were watching what was happening within Dinkytown, which, as part of Marcy Homes, our residents are pretty sensitive to the whole issue of density in our neighborhood, because, of course, many people know it's seen some of the greatest growth within the city. And at the time that we were starting to form some of the language for the Master Plan, a lot of these developments were encroaching into the boundaries of Dinkytown. And so it really kind of spurred this urgency to come up with some way to provide some sort of preservation designation in order to help stem some of the development and save some of the character of that area. So in looking at what has been achieved in that time and where we're at in terms of a springboard moving forward with guidelines, we're trying to see how this amendment really jives with that, how does it reconcile with that. And there are some great concerns. And the fact that it's listed specifically on the list of these activity areas that would be most impacted, that's where I think there needs to be more thought, but perhaps even taking it off that list for further study rather than having it highlighted as a particular area to be included. Thank you.
And next speaker.
Thank you. Kristinaity Tolleson, 1316 Fourth Street Southeast. I'm the owner of the bookhouse in Dinkytown and coordinator for Preserve Historic Dinkytown. And I'm here to speak, to follow up especially on what Hung said, about the challenge of including these activity centers specifically in this amendment. I have nothing but praise and amazement that the staff of the city has actually managed to get small-area plans done for all of these growth areas and activity centers in the last three to five to seven years. And I think it's a tremendous resource for the city and also represents investments, which we in the neighborhoods have also made. I've spent the last three years on one task force or another working with Hyla on Steering Committee for the Dinkytown Small Area Plan and Marcy Homes. So anyway, we've put in a lot of work, too, but, and these are significant investments in trying to clarify and create plans and descriptions of these areas that allow us to do the kind of careful, thoughtful development in these areas that benefits all of the city. I went back to the old comp plan, Minneapolis comp plan, to try to get a little more clarity about the history of the activity centers and the growth areas, because I was kind of confounded by the fact that they're all sort of thrown in together in this particular amendment, and found that really the activity centers and the growth areas do have slightly different purposes and slightly different characters. And it's not a mistake that many of the activity centers, many of which are also great streets areas for the city, the city also gave Dinkytown a Great Streets grant, again, these are wonderful investments, that those activity centers are these sort of special-character areas of the city that attract people and whose development and thoughtful preservation and enhancement is an asset to the city as a whole. And so I would be very, and I also don't think that necessarily that there's any clarity that's created by this conflation of growth areas, activity centers. It has the potential to increase the vagueness and perhaps even create administrative burdens for developers who have, under this particular amendment, a pretty wide-open field without a lot more guidance. And we don't want people to be investing either in project development or properties where they're going to be shot down. You know, I think that considering a connection, a tighter connection between the small-area plans and the density planning is really important. So I would like to see if I share the concerns about this timing of all of this procedurally in terms of policy. But if the city were to create an upward density in an amendment like this, I would strongly urge that you consider removing the reference to specific activity centers and say something about activity centers in or near growth centers in accordance with the guidance of the small-area plans. I've been searching and searching for some kind of tie between, that gives the city staff and the citizens a little better handle on how these things can relate, because there just isn't right now. And that's one of my major concerns. So I think that about does it. I do want to reflect on something that Jan Morlock, who's our community relations person, said about growth can outstrip not only the paid infrastructure of the city, but it can outstrip the social infrastructure of the city. Dinkytown takes very seriously its responsibility for all these students from all over, small towns all over the area. We provide, we try to provide safety, real connections, affordable prices, and we need a certain stability of our social infrastructure to continue to do that. I am sorry to say that we have our first public meeting to discuss a murder at Fifth and Eighth tonight or tomorrow night, and that's really upsetting for Dinkytown. And that's one of the potential hazards of inappropriate density. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Mohammed, and I'm here as a representative of the West Bank Community Coalition. It's the neighborhood organization for the Cedar Riverside West Bank area. And I'm here today to oppose this amendment. Pretty much, I think everyone mentioned a lot of the reasons why, specifically relating to Cedar Riverside, it is the densest neighborhood, not only in the city but also in the state. Looking at the future plans, it's also one of the top-three neighborhoods that are scheduled to be even, to have even more development. So I'm here as part of the neighborhood to say that Cedar Riverside is a perfect illustration of public services not matching up to development. And we are here from neighborhood residents all the time about how the density has hurt their quality of life over the last year. We've just had a new development, which added 250, so, new apartments to three-blocked area that already has about 1,500 apartment units. So, yeah, you know, we've had a neighborhood survey that showed almost 80%, 90% of the residents are completely opposed to that, and I just want to make sure that you guys consider that while there is a lot of benefits to that financially, there are also real people on the ground that are hurt by that every day. The worst story I've heard is with this new development, 515 on Park, that is right on the back of Riverside Plaza, there are several units that, literally, the development in between is about two feet. And we've heard from many residents, one lady who says she can't even stay in her apartment anymore because right outside of her window is another building. So she has not, you know, whereas she used to have a view of downtown, now she has a view of a brick building, and she doesn't spend any time in her apartment, and she has felt depression and another kind of mental effects because of that. So I just want to be a voice for those that can be here today and ask that you consider that, as you consider this amendment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? If there is no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, are there any further questions, or would someone like to start the discussion off with a motion? Commissioner Gisselman.
Excuse me, I just had a question for Hyla, just regarding the actual number itself. And I guess before I ask that, I wanted to say first that I think something that Councilmember Fry said is helpful for us all to bear in mind, and that is that regardless of whether this language passes or not, that we still have a process of scrutiny safeguards that are in place for future projects from a zoning and planning perspective. And I think, obviously, it's helpful for us all to keep that in mind. Regarding this particular language, though, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about the actual number. And certainly, it's alarming to some, and I can understand how that would be, because it's gone from 200 to 800, there's a major difference there, of course. I guess I'm just curious, though, when we talk about that particular number, I mean, for example, one of the speakers presented us with some numbers, assuming those numbers were accurate, I don't think that any of the existing or proposed projects on that list had more than perhaps 300 dwelling units per acre. And so I guess I'm just curious, I mean, if, let's say that we, as a body, tonight were to propose an amendment to this before it were passed to be something like 400 instead, what would be the harm in that? I mean, is that, would that be appropriate? I feel like I'd kind of be taking a shot in the dark, too, if I were to propose, you know, 400 as a number, but I'm just curious what your thoughts are about that.
Certainly. That is, the 800 unit per acre is, was designed, as I think some people have stated, sort of as an upper limit, not to say that most projects will approach it. We have had a couple projects in recent, past couple of years that have gotten into the 700s units per acre. I can say that that does typically come across as a special case. I think in both cases, the projects were able to have their parking accommodated in buildings that weren't the main building, as a separate building, as is the case sometimes in downtown. I mean, sometimes in downtown, you can rely on existing structures or have them on a different site. So that increases the achievable density on-site. It's frankly, to have a building that parks itself and achieves that level of density, that would be very, quite unusual. I mean, it's, it's not the goal of policy to be able to sort of figure out the building mechanics and try to calculate exactly what's achievable. Again, that was made as an umbrella term, just taking into account all these different cases. But I can say that, at least in our experience, it's not common to get very close to that number. I wouldn't have a magic number to oppose to offers as separate, but that's been our experience today.
Would anyone like to make a motion? Commissioner Slack.
I will make a motion to approve staff recommendation for the text amendment for the very high density comprehensive plan amendment.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Slack and then Commissioner Rockwell.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank everybody who came out to testify as it relates to this text amendment. We appreciate you being engaged in the community planning process and it, the testimony does make a huge difference in how we look and determine the viability of projects. For me personally, I see this as a, a policy statement. I think we had a couple of people out here testify that as a policy statement, it, it's really an overall arching guiding tool to help create a more sustainable city. And so, and that there are a lot of mechanisms in place to really get down to the nuts and bolts of our projects, these being other policy documents, which in a lot of cases are small area plans, which we look at as a very important piece of the review process. And then you have your regulatory tools, whether it's a zoning ordinance or the historic designation guidelines. So for me, as a policy statement, I'm fine with the number, I'm fine with text amendment. There are also a lot of cultural considerations that I, I personally, and I, and I believe I speak for other members of the planning commission, that we really weigh heavily when we're looking at development projects. These cultural considerations are, are a lot harder to put a value on, but are really important to me as an individual on this commission. These include livability, quality of life. And for me, one that's really important is context, so really understanding a context of a project. I think also with that comes the input from the residents and the neighborhood communities and the neighborhood groups. That testimony is really important for us to hear really what the residents, the people who live in these communities, the people who ultimately will have to live with these projects, what they have to say weighs a lot on decisions that are made. And so for me, that's the reason why I'm making this motion and approving the text amendment.
Commissioner Rockwell.
I'd like to echo much of what Commissioner Slack said and make a couple additional points. I do think that context plays a large role here and that in, in every project and that the testimony we heard today underscores that. You know, a lot of, a lot of residents who testified today talked about NICE, the NICE development as an example of an inappropriately high proposal in a sensitive area. And I guess I would point to the NICE development as a success for those alternate processes because there was initially a 30-story development proposed. And, and because of those other mechanisms and because of neighborhood voices, it dropped to six. And that's a fantastic example of the fact that these upper limits, it do not mean that every development are going to reach those upper limits. We have other mechanisms in place. And this commission and our neighborhood associations and our city staff all take those considerations into account as we see in, in an example like NICE. There were a couple questions about the timeliness of this with the comprehensive plan update coming and, and I understand that and hold those concerns as well. But I think, when I think of Minneapolis as a city, I think of a city that I want to see compete nationally and internationally in its fast-moving world. And if a compelling project comes up in the next few years that, that could help us continue to move in the direction that we want to see the city move in, I want to be able to see that development through. And that development will only go through if it's, if it's appropriate and if, going through all of the various processes we've discussed. So I think a vote for this text amendment is not a vote for unlimited density. I know that there's a, there's a fear there of that, but it, what it does is it allows us to consider the opportunity in a streamlined fashion that, for projects that may increase our, our ability to use transit and walk and reduce our emissions through density and, and increase housing affordability. You know, the, the more we screw regulations into our code, the more we winch all those down, the, the, the higher our prices go, right? So I think that this provides opportunity, but does not, does not send all of our, our projects into the sky.
All right. Commissioner Magrino and then Commissioner Bender.
Thanks. Yeah, I just had a quick comment. You know, I know reading through the staff report here, there's sort of a lot of individual words and individual phrases that maybe seem sort of scary and seem sort of controversial. But I think when you take the staff report all together, it's kind of clear this is really just fixing a technicality in the, in the comprehensive plan. This is an administrative move, property zone C1, it's own C1, it's on the National Register of Historic Places, it's on the National Register of Historic Places. If it needs a CUP to build above four stories, it still needs a CUP to build above four stories. So I, I don't think that this is really quite as controversial as it seems when you see some of the words. I kind of jump out of the paragraphs here, so I will be supporting the amendment.
Mr. Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to make a point similar to Commissioner Magrino, so I think they did that very well. I do think though, that the comments and the testimony that we've heard highlight how big of a deal the bigger question is about how our city is growing and changing. And we're in a time when, you know, we are attracting a lot of investment. We are seeing record numbers of permits come through the planning commission and, and my committee, the zoning and planning committee each year. And I think that speaks to the desirability of our city. And we're hearing a lot about the pros and cons of that, right? We're hearing about people's concerns about the visual character of their communities and how those changes impact the neighbors that have been there for a long time. We're hearing concerns about traffic, you know, and, and adding more cars to already congested streets. And I think we'll take those to heart as we look forward into the comprehensive plan and the future policy decisions that will be coming through in that. I do think, again, kind of underscoring that this is really not changing, it's not changing the growth centers or the activity nodes that have been designated, it's not changing the bulk of buildings that are allowed. But I think it also does kind of re-highlight again, some of the benefits there are as well to having, to allowing more people to inhabit buildings of the same size. Even in neighborhoods more like mine, where the scale is much lower, you know, adding more people also has benefits. It helps support transit, so we get more cars off of the street and less traffic congestion. It supports local businesses that people love. And so, you know, as we move forward and talking about density, this is just one very small piece of that discussion. So I wanted to just really highlight and thank people who came to talk about both of the side, you know, both of those sides of that discussion. You know, I'll be supporting the amendment again because I think it really is just adjusting what is already an adopted policy that has been in place. But I look forward to the future conversations about how our city is growing.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll just add, I, I too see this as, as largely a formality or clarification. There's one area in the text of the comprehensive plan where there's no real maximum to that density and then another reference where it was a 200 units per acre. Really those, those density requirements are a requirement of the Metropolitan Council and its requirement of cities to plan for growth, so it can plan for its infrastructure investments. Right now, our zoning code doesn't currently refer to density like that. We, we do have obviously other regulations that restrict the, the bulk and, and height and location of, of buildings. So I, I don't see this as a very substantive change, even though I, I realize it does seem very jarring to, to see that number quadruple. And I also want to just reinforce that this certainly doesn't mean that we, that the city would allow a blanket 800 units per acre anywhere in any of these growth centers. We do have strong policy guidance in our small area plans as well as in our historic district guidelines that govern what, what development looks like in the future. And as, as Hyla pointed out, we, we have seen at least a few projects that have gotten close to that 800 units per acre. So I, I realize that it's, it's important that we, we resolve this issue and just clarify so that it doesn't become a, a big issue with, with future projects. I also want to add, there, there were some comments related to the impacts of population growth on safety and infrastructure. I, I want to just make sure that people understand it, it is important that the city grows in order for us to keep up with our infrastructure demands. There have been times when, in the city's history, when our population has declined and that's, that's when we've seen some really tough times when it comes to having the tax base to maintain our infrastructure. So having a growing city is, is important, I think, for the quality of life of, of all of us. So are there any further comments? If there are none, or please call a roll.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Crownsor.
Aye.
Gisselman.
Aye.
Gagnon.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Seven zero.
All right. Then that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on this item. We'll move on to item number two, which is at 3200 Bryant Avenue South, the rezoning, and staff is Mayling Smith. All right. We can get started.
Good evening, President Brown and Commissioners. The project before you is a proposal to rezone the property at 3200 Bryant Avenue South from the R2B zoning district to the C1 zoning district. As you can see right now, the, the subject property is located at the southwest corner of 32nd Street West and Bryant Avenue South. Bryant Avenue South is a community corridor in the area as well as Lyndale Avenue South. Lake Street is located just a few blocks to the north and that's a commercial corridor. Here are a few images of the existing building. It has two storefronts. It was originally construction in 1908 as a commercial property. It was downzoned, it was downzoned in 1924. So ever since 1924, it's been residentially zoned as well as the surrounding area. And so any, any future commercial uses that come in have to either apply for an expansion of non-conforming use or a change of non-conforming use or rezoning or stay as the exact same use continually. This is the proposed floor plan. The, the applicant is proposing two retail storefronts. One would be 995 square feet and the other would be 1,345 square feet. It's, again, it's a one-story building. And here's a rendering of some of this facade improvements that the applicant has already made and intends to, to make going forward. And I know this item was polled and I'm happy to answer any questions or just let the applicant and public speak.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, just very briefly. Please stick your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Dave Maryfield. I currently live at 3344 Fremont Avenue South, 55408. I am the owner of this property along with my wife and she and my now two daughters live close by at the address I just listed. I would say, you know, as an, as a neighborhood resident and having driven by this building and seen the history of it before, some of you may be familiar, it was previously called the Bryant Avenue Market, most notably, in my opinion, known for selling cigarettes, Mountain Dew and expired milk. So this is a, a project of mine that I'm looking to bring some rejuvenation into that space and that's the reason for having two, splitting the space in two. And I think the city planner and the results of her assessment probably speak for themselves with the, with the recommendation, so hoping that people can support it.
All right. And as I remember, there were maybe one or two people who were here to speak on this item yet. And you're welcome to speak now, so please come to the microphone and state your name.
Okay. Lee Switzenverk. And basically I own two properties that were within the circle of this. They are small apartment buildings and I've owned one of them since either 1999 or 98. And I've been active in trying to keep this a nice neighborhood since I purchased it. It's my retirement plan and if you can take a look at the hair, I'm getting old quick. So I'm kind of hoping to keep this part of Minneapolis really nice. This is my new neighbor and I don't want to, I didn't want to actually come to the meeting. I didn't think I would have to come to the meeting because I thought it was kind of, would be headed the other direction. But I came here, I think that I had a lovely market, which I'm sure in 1904 sold fresh groceries and things like that and provided for this. And you might not think it was nice, but when I'm working at one of the apartments that I renovated, if I needed to use toilet paper, it was down, down the corner. If I wanted some Windex to clean the windows, it was, it was there, it was very nice. And it kind of serviced the immediate neighbors. Like, and I advertised it to my renters as a very ugly but convenient convenience store because that's what it was. It was not beautiful by any means. And it was not a mom and pop grocery, it was just a pop. I mean, it was one person, they showed up every day and it was really low key. It was like the quietest business in town, even though it was ugly. And eventually the neighbors all got together and it was, I was also impetuous in this. They put a, a nice mosaic on the building because it always got graffiti. And the owner was, was up for that. And that's since been removed, which is great because this gentleman did a nice renovation on the exterior of the building. So there you have it. It is a neighborhood that's kind of, they now call it Lynn Lake. It's the outer reaches of the greater uptown and it is well-served by commercial properties. And it is kind of a quiet little residential niche in the neighborhood. It's owned R2B and I believe we're here because this property is kind of out of compliance with the, the current use as it was built. And most of the buildings on this particular street, I shouldn't say most, but at least half of them, and the two I own are also non-conforming to the, the zoning as it's written. And I, so I'm here to make my comments. I think it's a beautiful neighborhood, a very quiet business that serves the neighborhood was there. I don't know what's going to come in there because if you change the zoning from R2B non-conforming to C1, there won't be too much neighborhood input on what goes on and it could be a number of things. There's a lot of single-family homes close by and I've heard that this gentleman has generated quite a bit of support. And I'm thinking there's going to be signage if they put a restaurant in, which may or may not have enough parking spaces. I believe they can stay open until 2:00 in the morning. I know my, my residents wouldn't be that happy about it. And so there's many potential uses that could come into this building if it goes C1 and is no longer non-conforming. And I think I was listening to Councilperson Frye earlier talk about consistency and there, there is like to have this one C1 parcel in the middle of a C of R2B zoning and to do it, I believe would open up any other property owner who has non-conforming property on the block to asking to have their zoning changed to how the building was intended to be used. And I think that there's a lot of people that would hope to take advantage of that. So perhaps that, that you would set a precedence in regards to that, you would kind of break up your zoning. And I think it could be repurposed possibly for a home, maybe for a mobility impaired person or something like that. There, it's, it would, there are other uses for it. So that's kind of my thoughts and obviously you, you folks are going to make, make the big decision and I, I do wish you well with whatever you do with it. So that was it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
And I think that there's a lot of people that would hope to take advantage of that, so perhaps that you would set a precedence in regards to that. You would kind of break up your zoning, and I think it could be repurposed possibly for a home, maybe for a mobility-impaired person, or something like that. There are other uses for it. So that's kind of my thoughts, and obviously, you folks are going to make the big decision, and I do wish you well with whatever you do with it. So that was it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Pamela Meyerhoff, and I am here, not because I'm particularly against anything that Dave wants to do, but like the gentleman who spoke before, but even more so, I have a very, very close proximity. My building, my house, is basically almost one with the store. So our backyard is, it's very nonconforming, because as I, when I looked into making some alterations in my home, I discovered that you could never build the way this neighborhood is much denser. In fact, it achieves more density than almost anywhere else in the neighborhood. So my main concerns would be really the opening the door with the rezoning. As previous gentlemen did say for me, this was a small store, it was ugly for a while, but it did provide a neighborhood service. It was mostly people walking to it. It wasn't open very late, and I guess my concern is seeing how certain development is going, that there's been a lot more bar, restaurant, late-night, kind of active businesses going in, and I'm concerned that changing the zoning of this will open the door to possibly creating a situation that would seriously impact my property, because there is really, there is no parking, there's no room really for the garbage. This was clearly built before many, many regulations, so I just want to make sure that the property stays probably zone-residential with a variance to use for limited purposes. Amazingly, as a convenience store, it was a very quiet property, there were very little problems, except for the usual graffiti and that sort of nature. So my preference, as a very close neighbor, would be to keep it zoned as it is, and to allow variance for some limited commercial use. And, you know, I just have concerns about what are the property, you know, the nature of the property value, just because of the very tight residential property in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to say something on this item? If there's no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any further questions, or would anyone like to start off the discussion? Commissioner Kronzer, and then Commissioner Gagnon.
First question. Mayling, has the property lost its nonconforming status?
No.
Okay. And then can you remind us what basic uses are allowed in C1?
General retail sales and services, bakery, let's see. You know, the intent is to have small-scale neighborhood-serving uses, so antique stores, you could have a small bank there, you could not have pawn shops, you could not have a tobacco shop or auto repair liquor store, so that would not be allowed in C1.
Can you have a restaurant or a massage?
You would be able to have a restaurant with limited entertainment, and you could have a restaurant. Now, the space is very limited. Right now, the building is approximately 2,400 square feet, so if the property owner chooses to use that, they'd be very limited in how they use the building, and they'd be restricted from a licensing standpoint as well.
Commissioner Gagnon.
Okay, my question was similar. So under current zoning, those things are allowed?
I'm sorry, did I misunderstand the question?
So under current zoning?
Current zoning, you could do a single-family home or a two-family home. I apologize if I misheard the question.
Oh, okay. No, I think I misunderstood.
So very few nonresidential uses would be allowed, and most of them have a minimum lot area requirement of 10,000, 20,000 square feet.
Okay. And are there any alternatives other than to allow him to build what he would like to build, than rezoning to C1?
Steph has responded to the finding about whether there are any other reasonable uses under the current property. If they were to do a single-family home or a duplex there, they would have to get a minimum lot area variance. And then they'd also have to get a minimum lot area variance, probably for any other nonresidential use that they would use. So we find that there are very, there are almost no reasonable uses under the existing zoning for that property.
But there's alternative methods of achieving.
Yes. So the applicant came in with the rezoning request, but they have the option also to request the change of nonconforming use if they wanted to, so they could have pursued that. Every time the use changes, they have to submit, they have to go through the public hearing process again, because of its nonconforming status.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would make a motion if there are no more questions. So thank you. I would move to follow the staff recommendation and grant the rezoning to C1, and happy to speak briefly.
The motion in a second.
This is in the 10th ward. It is unusual in that it's, so we've seen a few of these recently, where, you know, this is a building that was clearly built for commercial purposes, and was rezoned because one philosophy of zoning is to, you know, take the sort of areas of the city and blocks and zone them for future use. But, so it is a bit unusual to have one C property in a C of R2B, but I do think, given the historic form of this neighborhood, and the fact that this is a commercial building, I think there is a good argument for the C zoning. Putting the, you know, the sort of constant need to come back for applications for nonconforming use, I think creates a lot of uncertainty for an owner of a commercial building. These small buildings, you know, I think they're, can be more challenging to rent, and I hear a lot from folks that they like to have these neighborhood-serving businesses nearby. This is a very small site, so I think it's very unlikely to have something like a restaurant here. I don't know, but if there was any use that required, that needed a liquor license, we have other controls in place that would allow us to set the hours of operation of any kind of restaurant, certainly anything that served alcohol. And so I feel comfortable with those regulations, allowing us to mitigate any kind of impacts on neighbors, recognizing that this is very close to residential. But that's often the case in our commercial corridors as well. So I think it's appropriate here to think forward and think how we imagine this building will be used in the future, and how we would like it to be used in the future. I think it's unreasonable to consider that this would be used as residential. I mean, maybe you could, but I think it's clearly a commercial building, and therefore, it seems appropriate to me for it to have the neighborhood-scale commercial zoning.
Right. Commissioner Rockwell.
Very briefly, I do, I agree with Commissioner Bender, and think that if we require application for nonconforming use or change in nonconforming use, reality is this building is going to end up being vacant, which is worse for the neighborhood. Also, you know, we look at this map, and it's a huge C of R2B, but in fact, there are other nonconforming uses along Bryant. In fact, on the same block, I believe, there is a café down at 33rd and Bryant. So this is, you know, these little one-off speckled commercial uses, particularly on a street like Bryant, which is a throughway, they are part of the way the city developed, and this building, I think, fits in with that. So that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kronzer.
I will be supporting the motion. Just also wanted to mention that Bryant is a bus corridor, number four, is on high frequency, but it's darn near close. And also, there's a full-block park, kitty park from this property as well, which really changes the context and the urban form of this intersection as well. Thank you.
All right. And I'll just add, Bryant Avenue, of course, is considered a community corridor in the comprehensive plan, which generally supports C1 zoning. We've also established more of a precedent in recent years of accommodating these small standalone commercial buildings that had, have been there for many years, and we've seen, if they remain nonconforming uses, a lot of times, they just remain vacant. It's very unlikely, the economics do not work for someone to tear down a building like that and build a single-family house or duplex, which might otherwise be allowed by the zoning code. So I think this makes a lot of sense. And the C1 zoning district is still pretty restrictive. It's intended for buildings like this that are very small in their square footage. So if there is no further discussion, please call a roll.
Aye.
Gagnon.
Yes.
Gisselman.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item two. Item three is DLTL Ventures LLC at 41635th Avenue Northeast, a conditional use permit and a site plan, and Erin Hanauer is staff.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. I'm going to use the computer. You provided a good summary, Chair Brown, of the applications before you to establish a recycling facility here in northeast Minneapolis. The applicant is okay with the conditions of approval, but it was, there was, we did receive notification and an email from neighbors with concerns and objection to the plan. DLTL is an establishment that's applying for the conditional use permit that completes recycling, warehousing, and manufacturing of consumer goods. And the recycling aspect is the only portion that requires a conditional use permit. The project site and the properties on the west side of 5th Street Northeast are industrial, and then on the, as you can see clearly on the map, on the right side, there's the low-density It's important to note that with the project site, and here's just an aerial of the subject property in the neighboring area, but the project site and the industrial land on the west side of 5th is part of the Sherem Yards Industrial Employment District. And in 2006, the City of Minneapolis established seven industrial employment districts, including Sherem Yards, as part of the industrial land use study and employment policy plan, with the goals to help retain and attract new industrial firms, prevent industrial land from being converted to residential property. And here showing all the industrial employment districts, and then on the right, that map showing the Sherem Yards Employment District, that red dot being the subject property, so just the eastern border portion of the employment district. So even though the plan wants to retain the industrial land, it also wants to provide a buffer between the industrial uses and the residential uses, so having additional landscaping. Currently, that landscaping is not there along 5th Street, where it borders the residential properties. It has had increased outdoor storage since the applicant, the property owner, took over in 2011. And it's, on the right-hand side, you'll see a number of trailers that have been parked there, more than just loading in and of itself. So staff had concerns with that, and also want to note, as we did in the report, the number of, there's been four complaints that have come in in 2014 and 2015. Those have been resolved, or have been closed by our other city departments. So we just also want to point out, we know that there can be some friction when there is industrial and residential uses that are side-by-side, and that this use was operating beyond what is allowed by a recycling facility. However, the applicant has, is now well-aware of the requirements for recycling use and the other aspects of operating near residential property. And to help with that transition, the applicant, to help with that transition from industrial to residential, the applicant has proposed to do a number of improvements to the site, to bring the site in compliance with the zoning code, including, there's a barbed-wire fence on the southern portion of the site along 5th Street. The applicant is proposing to remove that. CPED is recommending putting stipulations on the outdoor use of the property, including not allowing trucks or trailers to be parked on-site outside of typical loading, and not allowing parking of inoperable vehicles on the site. in addition, a number of site improvements that the applicant's proposing or staff's recommending. With that removal of that barbed-wire fence shown in that red or brown on the site, the applicant is proposing a decorative privacy fence, both along the 5th Street and then along the southern portion of the property, and then adding 7,300 square feet of landscaped area along 5th Street, planting of 30 trees, 150 shrubs, and 150 plants. So we really feel that these additions to the site and the public right-of-way will really help with the buffering, it will help the aesthetic appearance of the area, and help with that transition from industrial to residential. There's been two letters received since the publication of the report, one from the neighborhood, appreciating the applicant's work to mitigate and improve, to help with the situation with neighbors' concerns, and then also the second letter being opposition to the project. Happy to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Kronzer.
Thanks, Erin. The staff report says there's three uses going on at this facility. Is that still correct?
Commissioner Kronzer, that's correct, and that would be maintained as part of...
Okay. So then what percentage is the recycling facility of the overall? Now, just approximate, so a third is a half, is it 75%?
Let me show. If you can see this, thank you, about 20%, and it's the portion here that's blank labeled E, I believe, right here. So about 20% of the building.
Okay, but the conditions of approval here would apply to all three of those uses?
The conditions would apply to all three uses. I do want to point out, with outdoor storage, we call out for the conditional use permit, condition of approval that we're recommending, is that outdoor storage for the recycling facility is limited to cardboard and paper. If one of the warehouse uses, or the production use, wanted to have outdoor storage, they would, they would have to comply with the other requirements, that it be, it be at least 100 feet from the residential property to the east. So it'll be up to our inspectors to analyze if that outdoor storage is tires, or not tires, but metal aluminum cans, or else if it's elements that would be used for the warehouse or the production use.
Sure, but that would be allowed independent of this application?
Yes.
So that'd be allowed without, that has no bearing on this?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Ken Piper with Tannic Architects, 118 East 26th Street in Minneapolis, and I'm representing the applicant, Dan and Linda Karst. I think Aaron has pretty much articulated some of the technicalities of the site. What I'd like to do is just kind of quantify that a little bit, just for your edification. Again, I think it's important to note here that what we see on the site currently, as it relates to the edge on the industrial, is everything moving from this end to the west is industrial off of 5th Street, as well as to the north of 35th, and down to the south, what we have is railroad and overpass. So there's really not too much here. So I think what we're really dealing with here, and kind of going through this whole process, has been the edge that identifies industrial and the neighbors. I think you'll agree with me, based on what you see from some of the photos and those kinds of things, that there's been a lot of hardscape to the site, particularly on that. I wouldn't call it attractive. And so I think, from our purpose and the applicant, we've gone through the process of working with the planning commission, as well as with the neighborhood association, to understand some of what the issues are. I think we've come up with what I would term a remarkable approach to address that in terms of softening that hardscape, particularly that addresses the neighbors and potentially I think just to summarize this, this is a footprint of the building itself, and you'll see from that, again, that what we're trying to emphasize here is the area that addresses the recycling component, which at this point is sorting and bailing, is primarily what the applicant does on, within the building, on-site. And I think, as Erin mentioned, there's a series of other uses. Now, these uses, office, light, and industrial, are all permitted. Recycling is also permitted, but under conditional use. And then I would just like to take you, again, to the area. And then I would just like to take you, again, to the area that we were, that we're really referencing here, and bring you into some of the order that is created by what is now the hardscape. And I think the most remarkable thing here is an expanse of about 370 feet by 20 feet of basically greenscape that we're going to put to it. So it's basically from curb 20 feet in. And there's a combination of that because the yard here meets, we're again putting the requirements of not just the decorative fencing here, but also layering that from the curb with grass, some trees here, and then with shrubbery that actually complements the height of the fencing. So it's important to note that as this grows, you're not just going to be seeing fencing, it's going to be a layer of greenscape. Also, just to note on here, that access to the site, whereas before seemed to be part of all this hardscape, is now we're restricting to two curb cuts. One curb cut to serve the parking area here, and the other curb cut, which is a little wider, to serve the traffic, the access that will go to the yard and within. Also, this area will be striped. You can see from some of the overheads that that's not the case right now. And then in addition, the shrubbery continues all the way through. So again, I comment that this will be a remarkable transformation from what you see right now. It is greening of that area. It is creating a buffer, it's creating a transition, and it's one that we look, that we really are excited about. In addition to that, based on the recommendations that are in front of you for the conditional use permit and all the conditions, we agree to those conditions. So we, again, are asking for your consideration. And I think in addition to that, just to stress, that the neighborhood process was one where they were very complimentary of what we had done, and at a position of neutrality. We certainly see that as a positive because we understand, at the same time, that part of that reservation was from the proximity of residential to the building. The building's been there since 1959, so.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions? There are none. Commissioner Slack.
Yeah, one quick question. Was there any thought to, and I don't know if this is a city policy, but any thought to extending the sidewalk through the site to 35th? And then a second question along with that is, the fencing, the new fencing that's being shown, was there any thought of extending that all the way up to 35th as well?
Commissioner Slack, for the sidewalk, we did discuss with Public Works, and there was no, at this time, interest to continue the sidewalk at this location. I think just the block to the north of the project site is also void of a public sidewalk. And then, sorry, I don't have the full extent beyond this, but, and then shortly after that, it ends the city, the city boundary, the northern city boundary at this portion. So we did review that with Public Works, but there was, at this time, no plans or no interest in having a public sidewalk continued there. And then, could you repeat the other question? Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Slack, I believe your question was, as it relates to the fence going all the way to 35th. And while consideration was made to that, I want to just point out here that, first of all, in addition, you know, we've got, we've limited down to two curb cuts. But what we do feel about this is that with the shrubbery that we are proposing, as for example, the requirement in this area is for a three-foot fence. And we feel that with the shrubbery that we're proposing, and a maturity life of two to three years, that this will exceed the three-foot height. And so would provide, we feel would be a little more effective than the hard edge of fencing. So at this point, our fence, the tall fence, again, has been restricted to the yard area. And in addition to that, then, not only are we doing that, but we're doing a combination of that and burying heights of shrubberies and trees. Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please, one of the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeff Bixler. I live at 3465 Fifth Street Northeast, directly across the street from this property. And I do believe I am the originator of the original complaint from April of 2014 that brought this into light with zoning commissions. My family has owned this property that we live in since 1960. For the first 50 years, there's never been a complaint with any industry over there. It's always been inside, quiet, manufacturing, warehouse type of thing. The last four years has seen a great deterioration in the property over there. We're talking an entire scrapyard being run over there. The same type of thing that you're trying to take out of North Minneapolis along the river, your northern metal irons, scrappies, Kirsch bombs, is what they're asking to do here. That's what is being run out there in the property. I've had numerous complaints, I've had 3-1-1, zoning, everything else, and this is why we are here today. I have multiple pictures of what is being visible there. I even have a video I want to show you of just what happened in the last 15 days there, of a large machine just shredding a vehicle and taking it apart over there. When you talk recycling, you think cans, indoor facilities. If this is a proposed indoor facility, why isn't it indoors already? This has been operating for four years already over there, with complaints going for the last two-plus since I started. I don't agree with this. The job they're proposing looks nice, yes. The greenway is supposed to be there already, that's city property, that's been paved over previously. So that should have been there anyways. The fencing, six-foot-high fence, does nothing. Our property, six feet above the street level. We look right over everything into this place and to watch this. Also, this permit, or asking for this permit does not address the other issues that were in my original complaint. There's multiple zoning issues going on over there, with intermodal trucking companies operating out of there, general freight trucking companies operating out of there. There's, from what I can see, at least 10 other, 10-plus people operating, 10-plus businesses operating out of that building over there. You have no idea who's coming or going, there's problems over there, there's cars coming and going, you don't know if this is a crime scene or what. It's all hours of the night, hours of operation aren't observed. You know, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, we're calling 911 to get a squad out there to stop the noise from trucks being loaded. I don't agree with this. Like to show you what we see, if I can... Oh, I guess we can't really zoom in very well on that.
The camera operator can zoom in a little bit.
This is what you're talking, outside storage. This is what we see out here on a daily basis. Just piles of metal, piles of junk being dumped on the ground, hauled in by numerous companies, different companies, dumped on the ground, shredded, cut up with this machine, packed, cubed, and shipped back out. It's continuous noise, you got a dozen diesel trucks running over there at all times of the day and night, fumes that are, all the winds come across there, the fumes are all blown into the residence across the street. And our property values have dropped. We've had, seen an increase in foreclosures, or people just walking away from their properties now, because they can't sell them because there's no value. And I really am opposed to this. Let me see if I can... I'll show you a little short video here. Can I zoom in on... Of the large crane in the back shredding a semi-trailer? This crane operates, or whatever, operates higher than the building, so there's no way you can move this operation indoors. Look at that, so that's a semi-trailer being ripped apart. That's me standing on my back doorstep watching it. The other machine they use is a semi-trailer also, it's a large compactor that they use to either squish cars, or squish bundles of metal together and ship them out of there. I've seen motorhomes brought in there and shredded, semi-trailers, semi-tractors, cars, you name it, it's came in there, been dropped on the ground, cut up, and packed into these dumpsters and hauled out. This is not your recycling facility that they're playing it to be, that it's going to be great for the neighborhood. With that, I am opposed to this. And I would ask that you do not approve this.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Rachel Lawlum, and I'm a resident of 3467 Fifth Street Northeast. My husband and I moved in there 10 months ago. April 2015, we purchased our home, and just to be clear, we 100% recognized when we bought the house that we were moving in directly across the street from a facility like that. In addition to the points made by Mr. Bixler, I would like to, you know, reinforce what he said, and also point out that, you know, the facility, we've seen it operate all hours of the night. Between midnight and 3:00 a.m., you can always expect someone there, and it's not always trucks, or semis, or anything loading, unloading. Sometimes we've seen, like, two vehicles meet up there, I don't know what is going on, I don't know what kind of exchange it is, but, you know, gut feeling, it's some, it's crime-related, and I mean, I can't confirm that, but it's just, it's, it just doesn't seem legitimate. So our concerns are that, you know, the facility's operating hours, which I do realize because they're not public use, they're, you know, they don't have to fall under that guideline, you know, I, I'm sorry, you know, my concerns are that they're detrimental to the neighborhood comfort, and that, you know, the open nature of the lot and the people that meet there at random hours, you know, it's encouraging the potential for crime and other illegal activities. I do recognize that the proposal submitted includes a lot of nice greenery. I appreciate that, I think it's a good plan. However, I'd ask that the conditional permit also includes a clause, or whatever you want to call it, that restricts business operating hours. You know, it is, it's been an issue, and I feel like it might be a step in the right direction to at least... Anyway, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. So, as I was saying, I realized that the use, that operating hours, you know, are not subject to out... So the applicant states that they typically operate Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I realize that because their business is not open to the public, that they're not subject to hours of operation, but even as a ton-month resident, I can't say enough how disruptive that lot has been. And I feel that maybe perhaps a clause stating that, you know, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., or something similar, would be a very fair addition to the, to the proposal. Additionally, you know, the proposed plan includes some land, again, the landscaping at a six-foot privacy fence. Again, noting what Mr. Bixler said about this, you know, our houses are six feet off the ground, off street level anyway, so we'd be able to see right over that. I'd like to ask that that fence maybe be considered to run the whole length of everything off of Fifth Avenue Northeast, just as a buffer to deal with traffic. And additionally, perhaps a security gate might be a good addition for those two curb drops, or curb cuts, I believe they're called. Again, with all operating hours, all, you know, and who knows what's going on there at night, I, I feel like maybe a fence that runs all the whole way, and operating hours, a restriction on operating hours might be a potential solution. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Elaine Nissen, and I live at 3520 Spain Place, the street just east of northeast Fifth Street. I promise you, I would never have purchased my home five years ago had I known that a metal recycling operation was going to be operating within 100 yards of my house during the summer. I can't keep my windows open. It's constant noise. This is not fair. This is the destruction of a neighborhood. I think you need to please think very carefully about what you're doing. These individuals have proven that they do not have respect for our ordinances and for our zoning. What makes you think they will respect it going forward? And I thank you very much for letting me speak my piece.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yeah, yes, the applicant, if you'd like to, yeah, if you'd like to address anything, that's fine.
I think one of the things, Mr. Chair, council members, that I wanted to just point out here is that there is a security gate right at this point that basically secures the yard. And so this area here, again, is the area that, just based on, you know, daily usage and traffic of that nature, would be, would be the area unsecured at this point.
Right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, state your name and address.
Dan Karst and my wife Linda Karst, we're the owners of the property that we're talking about here. And I think I'd like to address some of the things that were just said here, because we didn't disagree with getting the conditional use permit. When we purchased that building four years ago, not only us, but the attorneys thought we were well within our zoning laws. Since then, we've been proven different. So we're not opposed to getting the conditional use permit or the screening, which we planned on doing regardless. But to the pictures you were shown here tonight, they had to trespass to get those pictures. They were not pictures from the street. I think to go back to the equipment outside, yes, we do have that. One thing is not a shredder, it is a shear. We do move it to use, to move things around in the backyard occasionally. That piece of equipment will be going to Woodbury tomorrow for two months. The last job it was on, it was on for closer to three months. So that large equipment is not there usually. And that's not, I understand what they're saying, but it's not part of the conditional use permit. We just store that equipment there until from job site to job site. We're very strong on the seven-to-seven noise ordinance that's in place for the city of Minneapolis. If there's other activities going on there after that, when we're not there, we feel it's, if it's bothering somebody, they should call the police, because we don't encourage any activity there, especially outside after 7:00 at night. And I think as far as putting a gate, we're not interested in putting a gate in front of our property where vehicles enter. We're looking at it as no different than a community park or something. If somebody is making noise or doing something illegal there, they should call the police. We wouldn't expect the city to fence in the park because somebody's doing something illegal there. And I don't know if you have any questions?
Commissioners, are there any questions? I have a question related to the hours of operation. So you're suggesting if there is any activity after 7:00 p.m., it's employees choosing to be there at that time, it's, your understanding is that normal business hours would be somewhere between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m.? 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m.?
And, and I don't believe they're referring to my employees. Well, they're, they're well aware of the noise ordinances, they're well aware of the idling ordinances, only because we have imposed them and taught them to do that. So as these ordinances come up to us, which we don't know all of them, but we adhere to them, to the best of our ability. So, I hope that answers your question.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And Commissioner Gisselman?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions for you, sir. It seems to me that as part of the conditions that the, that staff is recommending as part of the conditional use permit, some of the terms of those conditions are hopefully meant to remedy, I, I think, some of the, some of the complaints that were mentioned today. But for example, one of the conditions under the, under the conditional use permit, if it is approved, is that there'd be no automobile wrecking or dismantling allowed on the site. And so, what wouldn't, what we saw in the video, wouldn't you consider that to be in violation of that condition, once that condition is put in place?
Well, it's not an automotive, it's not an automobile, but I would agree that, that is something that we're not going to do, and we're not going to do on a regular basis.
And then I guess furthermore, it talks about the, the conditions talk about the recycling use, and it says the recycling shall be performed in a fully enclosed building, except that paper and cardboard can be stored in fully enclosed containers or trailers outside. And so it seems like all the recycling operation that's being proposed will have to happen indoors in the first place, and then, and that these containers outside, we saw a picture of a container that wasn't fully enclosed.
Correct.
But these conditions say that they would be fully enclosed, so we presume that if this were approved today, that those are the, those are the kinds of things you'd be expected to follow.
Right. And storage, unless I'm wrong, is 48 hours or longer. Anything under 48 hours is not storage. So would some of that traffic be there? Yes. But it is enclosed, as far as, they had to climb up a big hill, trespass, look over the fence down into that container. It's not visible from the street, or from the residence.
Well, I'm, I'm really more so, though, focusing on some of the noise-related complaints, because obviously that's a, you know, that, that presents a significant livability issue, especially in the summertime. But it, to me, again, it seems that these conditions, if your intent is to follow them, that these conditions are going to remedy the problems, at least some of the problems that were, that were mentioned today. Would you agree with that?
I would like to note that there were several complaints, and turned in and reported, and they were unfounded. So, I don't know, you know, when they come knocking on my door, and they do their inspections, there's nothing wrong.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Thank you. And then I did have one question for, for you, Aaron. Can we, I guess the first, two questions. Can we regulate the hours? Do we have a mechanism to do that? Can we, for example, I mean, obviously, there's going to be some, there's going to be some permitted uses on the site after certain hours, but can we be specific and say that no loading or unloading can happen outside of Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00? I mean, do we, do we have that tool at our fingertips here? And then the other question was just that, I mean, is there, do you have any information about there being a demonstrated lack of following the rules for this property? I don't know if you have that information or not.
All right. Commissioner Gisselman, I want to just mention, for the, can we limit the hours of operation? And this is an aspect that is now handled in our licensing chapters, but Jason, is this something that we can, with the conditional use permit, limit today?
Commissioners, we generally need to be cautious about limiting hours of operation. Industrial uses, of course, can have three shifts of employees. Through a conditional use permit, if there are issues with the site that you think just simply cannot be mitigated through conditions of approval, and the conditional use permit is simply not approvable but for restrictions on the hours of operation, then those kinds of restrictions would be your sort of logical last resort, short of a denial. So I would say that it's within your authority, but be cautious about going that route.
And then, to your second question about lack of following the rules, there's, there's adequate notes to, sometimes comprehensive notes in our system, in terms of the dialogue between inspectors and the applicant. And there's, I guess my summing up of the, of the violations on page three of the report were sometimes more back and forth for one of the elements than others. Some were just quickly closed, but a couple of them, there was some re-inspections to make sure that they were in compliance. So it, it wasn't as easy as an inspector going out and then it being resolved, it, some of them did take time in monitoring.
Commissioner Kronzer? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Gisselman, are you finished? Okay. Commissioner...
Yeah, Aaron, a couple other follow-up questions. Is it true that storage is defined as something longer than 48 hours?
That, I'm not aware of it being in the code, and I, I can do a quick search right here, but I am, that time element was something that I hadn't seen, or was aware of, from the zoning code standpoint.
Okay, and then, in condition number two of the conditional use permit, talks about automobile wrecking. Is that wrecking in general? And does that wrecking matter if it's inside or outside? Could they wreck inside, under this condition?
No. The, there's a, this, there's the recycling use, and then there's the scrap facility or scrap use, and that's where the dismantling of vehicles can take place. And there's no, within the building for recycling use, it's, it's just, it's just something that is not allowed for recycling.
So in a recycling facility, dismantling is, is not allowed?
Correct.
Period.
Period.
Inside, outside, with a crane, without a crane, with a chainsaw, it's not allowed? Okay, thank you.
Well, we, we, we close the public hearing now. I, I guess, well, let's, first, Commissioner Gisselman, do you have another question?
Just, just one follow-up question, Aaron, for clarification. So, the wrecking and dismantling, I mean, is it wrecking and dismantling anything of any kind, or is it really limited specifically to automobiles? I mean, could the, could the requirements be that there can't be any wrecking or dismantling, period, and that we don't use the word automobile?
In, in going strictly by the definition in, in chapter 520, it, it focuses on automobile wrecking or dismantling. For recycling, for being prohibited as part of recycling use.
Commissioners, I'd suggest that recycling by its nature is going to involve some sort of wrecking or dismantling of material, but the intent is that through both the enclosed building requirement and the, the vehicle wrecking issue, that it's supposed to create a fairly distinct line between a scrapyard and a recycling facility.
And it sounds like what we're saying is that this, any of this process is supposed to take place inside anyway.
Yes. That's correct. From some of the information, visual evidence submitted by the neighbor, it certainly looked like the property is currently not operating as a recycling facility and more like a scrapyard. I don't know when those pictures or video were taken, but that was not a recycling facility.
Commissioner Magrino, and then Commissioner Ben.
You said there are currently two uses, or have there been two, or have there been three? You know what the other two uses are?
Currently three uses, and that would be maintained, the recycling, warehousing, and production of, of, it's like a limited production facility, or production of some type of goods that was permitted in the I-2 and I-1 district.
Okay. Because I kind of wondered, you know, if the risk is sort of getting too much further into the weeds here, if there's some other term we could use in condition three there, maybe a little bit broader than recycling use, that maybe would address some of the concerns that the neighbors have about things being conducted outside, if there's something a little, you know, obviously, they're going to do things outside on the property, they're going to have to load things, they're going to have to bring things into the building, but if there's something a little bit more expansive than that, then I think we could probably put a lot of this to rest, if we know what's happening in the building.
Sure. That was discussed. We were mindful of this being an industrial site, and, and the different uses and things that need to happen with an industrial use, and the variety of uses, and not want to prohibit the other portions of the establishment, or the different establishments within here, from being penalized by the recycling use. We realized that when looking at the outdoor storage, when inspectors do that review, that that would, that there will be a judgment call of if that, if those outdoor elements are part of the recycling use, or, or not, are part of the other establishments that would be permitted, and wouldn't have as strict of outdoor storage requirements. But, I'm, I, I don't know, I, if, if, Mr. Wenberg, if, if there is thoughts on prohibiting having stricter requirements for the other uses for this conditional use permit, I report your thoughts.
Well, commissioners, in, in the definition of recycling, it refers to specific activities that, that maybe you're, you're getting at, Commissioner Magrino, like shredding, milling, crushing, baling, packing, disassembling. Those are the kinds of things that you think would be more expansive, and including in a condition of approval.
And I just want to mention the other, we, we worked hard with the applicant in, in both the greening and the placement of the outdoor storage, just to limit it, limit the visibility by, by the site improvements, and where they beam concrete on where they would put things and where they would not. And so that was, that was trying to address the, the visible, the negative visual aspect of outdoor storage for the other uses that's taking place.
Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for everyone's patience with us, as we, we rarely see industrial land use applications. So this has been really helpful discussion from staff. It sounds like part of what's happening is there are uses now that are not permitted, at least, that wouldn't be permitted now, nor would be permitted under, if this U.P. is granted. Is that correct?
The, the recycling, the other, warehousing and production permitted, the, it'd be the recycling that they never gained the conditional use permit to allow to be at this location. Recycling use is a conditional use in the I-2 district, which is...
Or maybe it's better just to talk about future uses. So if in the future, there's sort of automobile disassembly and other things happening, those things are not allowed?
Correct.
Under this conditional use permit?
Correct.
And so what are the enforcement mechanisms that would be used to enforce those rules in the future?
Well, this, this whole project came out of enforcement. There, we work closely with our zoning enforcement colleagues, and it will require more, more site visits, more reviewing of, of the project site, to make sure that they are in compliance with these requirements. It was, it took time to get to this point of, of, there were some elements I won't get into too far into the details, but if approved with these conditions, or modified by, by the board and commission, we will, we will work, and we'll have to work to enforce these conditions of approval that would be applied to these applications.
And Commissioner Rock?
Well, sorry, just a quick clarification on Commissioner Bender's question. So, if, so there are more site visits from zoning inspectors, are there fines if they're in, not in compliance?
For, yes, if, yes.
So, so Aaron? First condition of our site plan, says the site improvement should be completed by January 11th of 2018. That's pretty standard, two years. Is, is there a way we can reduce that time?
That has been done with other applications, yes.
Thank you.
Does anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve staff recommendations for, A, the conditional use permit to allow a recycling facility with the three stated conditions.
All right, we have a motion and a second, to approve the conditional use permit with the three stated conditions. Is there anything anyone would like to modify on those conditions? Or is there any further discussion? Commissioner Gisselman?
Well, I was, I was just going to add that I'm, I'm personally comfortable with this, particularly because of this language that talks about this recycling use being operated fully inside the building. And just now, when Councilmember Bender asked staff about, you know, future uses and things like automobile dismantling or wrecking, Mr. Hanauer said that that would not be allowed, and while he said that, the, the applicants themselves were nodding their heads. So it seems like everybody is on the same page, and it now comes down to, I guess, an enforcement issue that hopefully isn't going to be an issue.
All right. Is there any further discussion? If there is none, we have a motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And we have item B, the site plan review. Would anyone like to make a motion on that?
I'll continue and make a motion to approve staff recommendation for the site plan approval with the 13 stated conditions, with a modification to the first condition, where the site improvements to be completed by January 11th, 2017, so one year from today.
All right, is there a second? Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? I'll, I'll just add, and it appears that our neighbors who testified have already left, but I, I live in this general area too, and, and aware of some of the negative impacts of this facility. I, I am pretty confident that the 13 conditions of this site plan approval and three conditions of the conditional use permit will go a long way to address. It's, it's my understanding there have been some activities taking place here that, that actually aren't even allowed in the I-2 district, so I just want to make sure that everyone, including the neighbors, are aware that if they see any of that, they can certainly call the city and, and those issues can be addressed. But I, I do think the landscaping and, and screening that's going to be provided, and just memorializing some of these requirements, that activities take place in enclosed buildings, that there aren't inoperable vehicles sitting all over the place, I, I think will, will help make this facility a better neighbor. So if there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Seven zero.
All right, and that motion carries. Our next item of business is item four, the AMP House at 3255 Garfield Avenue South.
Good evening, commissioners. There are four applications before you for the property at 3255 Garfield Avenue South. Some background on the site, it's currently zoned R2B. The lot area is a little over 11,000 square feet. It's in the Lindell neighborhood. It's designated future land use in the conference of plan as urban neighborhood. It's located one block from a community corridor, which is Lindell. It's kitty corner from Painter Park. The surrounding area is generally residential, with a mix of densities. Along the west side of Garfield is mostly multifamily housing. Along the west side of Garfield is mostly multifamily housing. And then along the east side of Garfield on this block is primarily single family with a few multifamily buildings as well. Some history on the property, the existing building was used as a, was built in, I think, 1911 or 1916. I'm not sure of the exact date, but it was used as a utility substation until the 1990s. And since then, the brick building has been vacant. In 1996, the neighborhood group worked with the owner, Excel, to put up these murals over the boarded windows, and that's been in place for now 20 years and dubbed it the Garfield Aquarium because the murals are fish. The applicant's proposal is to convert that existing vacant building into four dwelling units, as well as an approximately 900 square foot co-working office space. Also, they would be constructing a three-stall garage at the rear of the property, which meets all of our zoning requirements for garages. There would be a small addition that would be constructed along the north elevation of the existing building that would provide access to three of the dwelling units. And then the fourth dwelling unit would be accessed from a separate door towards the rear of the building. The applications that are required for the project, first is a rezoning from the R2B district to the OR1 district. Second is a conditional use permit to increase maximum height from their permitted two and a half stories or 35 feet, whichever is less, to three stories, 33 feet, nine inches. There's also two variances for the front yards, which are along Garfield and 33rd. So I'll go through each one of those. So the rezoning, the applicant is requesting that the property be rezoned to the OR1 neighborhood office residence district, which is intended to be a small-scale mixed-use environment of low to moderate density dwellings and office uses. The staff analysis for the rezoning can be found on pages three to five of the staff report. The property is designated as urban neighborhood in the conference of plan, as I mentioned. These areas are predominantly residential, but are typically lower density and are not intended to accommodate significant new density or growth. These can, urban neighborhoods can include small-scale uses scattered throughout. As I mentioned, also, Lindell Avenue is a designated community corridor and is only a block from the site. As far as the finding related to the public interest, staff found that with the existing building on site, the property is limited in its potential reuse options. Rezoning to OR1 would allow for more potential uses on the site, but because OR1 is still a fairly restrictive zoning district, this rezoning would not drastically alter the allowed form of future development on the site, potential future development on the site. The property on the east side of Garfield is all zoned R2B, as well as mostly to the east and Painter Park. However, across the street from the subject property, the west side of Garfield is all zoned R4. And then along Lindell Avenue, there's a mix of commercial and office residential zoning. Permitted uses, as you'll see in this table, in the R2B district include single-family dwellings, small community residential facilities, community gardens, parks, places of assembly, child care centers, and small market gardens. And rezoning to OR1 would allow multifamily dwellings, offices, theaters, educational arts centers, preschools, and then some additional conditional use permit, or conditional uses, which would require a conditional use permit that would come before planning commission. Staff found that while some reasonable uses do exist in R2B, the likelihood that the existing building would be repurposed for those uses is highly unlikely. And therefore, we find that rezoning to OR1 would support the retention of the existing building as it provides more adaptive reuse options for the building. Also, although the property is zoned residentially, it has never been used residentially. It's been zoned R2B since at least 1975. It, as I said before, was a utility substation for over 80 years and has been vacant ever since. Those properties that I mentioned on the west side of Garfield that are zoned R4 were rezoned to R4 just recently in 2010 as part of the Midtown Greenway rezoning study, and the boundary was Garfield Avenue. So that's why this property was not considered as part of that. The vast majority of properties in this surrounding area were built in the early 20th century. So there's not been a significant change in the area, as noted in number five. So staff recommendation based on that analysis, we recommend that you approve the application for rezoning to OR1. And then moving on to the conditional use permit to increase maximum height, so the existing building is two stories or 26 feet, the applicant is proposing to construct a rooftop greenhouse, which per the zoning code definition would be a third story to the building. So although the overall height would still be below the maximum 35 feet, the rooftop addition, because it's three stories, requires the conditional use permit to increase maximum height. Staff would note that this would be taller than the majority of properties in the area, but with the condition of approval that the height and area be limited to the roughly 500 square foot rooftop greenhouse addition and the height that is proposed, which is less than the 35 feet, it was a reasonable, and it was reasonable and met the findings for this conditional use permit to increase maximum height. So again, we're recommending that with one condition, or with two conditions. And then finally, the variances, there's two front yard variances that are being requested. The first is along Garfield Avenue, which is from the approximately 35, 31 feet, which is set by the established property to the north to, and the variance request is to zero feet for a proposed stair, corner stairway and entrance landing to the property to reduce. And then the second variance is along the south side of the property. That's also a front yard because the adjacent property to the east across the alley, their front yard faces 33rd, so this is the front yard. So that request is from the required 15 feet to zero feet for a patio. Talking about the Garfield, that just shows the established variance line, so the required front yard's 31 feet. Stairs and entrance landings have specific limits if they're going to be allowed as a permitted obstruction in a required front yard. That limit is eight feet and then for stairs and then entrance landings can be up to 32 square feet. The proposed stairway on either side of the corner is between 20 and 25 feet in width, and then the landing is 350 square feet. So that is a significant increase from what's allowed as a permitted obstruction in the front yard. Just the three findings for a variance. There's more analysis in the staff report, but essentially staff did not find that there was any practical difficulty in complying with the ordinance related to the front yard. There were no unique circumstances that were requiring the large, larger than permitted stairs and entrance landing. While generally reasonable required yards are intended to be unobstructed, unobstructed from the ground to the sky, and the applicant has other options such as giving a smaller stair and entrance patio that would comply with the permitted obstructions. Also, staff noted that the proposed stairway and entrance landing would alter the character of the front yards. On this block face, the block face is primarily, primarily residential in character with small stairways and walkways. And this, the proposed stairway and entrance landing is essentially a public space, which is out of character with the residential nature of the block. So moving on, staff is recommending that the planning commission deny that variance. And then moving on to the variance along 33rd, so the required front yard's 15 feet, as I noted, and the applicant is proposing, there's an existing areaway in this location. It's about 150 square feet, and he's proposing to essentially add a metal grate to the top of the areaway and then extend the patio to the rear property line. And so that would create a, I think it's seven feet by 56 foot patio, and that is in the front yard of, that is set by that neighbor that faces 33rd. So similarly, staff found that there were no practical difficulties in complying with the ordinance. As you would have noted on the site plan, there's over 5,000 square feet of open space on the north side of the property where a patio or outdoor living could take place. There's no necessity to placing it along the south edge. And it is also similarly to the other front yard variance, not reasonable in the front yard of that adjacent property, and it could significantly impact that neighbor. So again, staff is recommending denial of that variance along 33rd as well. Public comments, a number of public comments were received that you should have in your packet. There were many in opposition and also a few in support of the project, but you have those with you, and then I think there are a few people here to speak. So I'll just leave up the staff recommendation for those applications and then take any questions.
Thanks, Lisa. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Gisselmann.
Just one question, Lisa, and that is you mentioned that it's been R2B since, I think you said the mid-'70s?
Correct.
But it, so its prior use was an electrical substation. I was just kind of curious, how did it get to be R2B with that kind of use there?
I believe it was just kind of a wide swath of R2B zoning there in the '70s and so that's kind of.
I see, thanks.
Commissioner Crowder.
I have a few questions. So the CUP for height is based on the, on the number of stories and not the number of feet?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then it's mentioned in the staff report, it was a little unclear, is this a historic building that's on the national register or it's eligible?
Sorry, I meant to mention that. So this building has been identified in previous historic surveys as a potential historic resource, but it's not designated locally or nationally. But one survey did note that it could be eligible for both.
Could be, okay. A little, maybe this is more for the applicant, but the area well, that comes up to the property line or the back of the sidewalk?
Correct. Sorry, the back, the property line, there's a few feet between the sidewalk.
And that's two feet in height.
Correct.
Okay, then the proposed continuation of that for the patios, that's at the same height and the same location?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, the patios themselves, so it's a, it's a two-foot retaining wall, and then is there any landscaping and hard space or is it all just hard space? It's hard, or are there fences or any landscaping in those areas?
As far as I understand it, it's essentially a metal grate over the areaway and no fences or landscaping.
What about the areas to the east? That's not.
To the east, it actually extends all the way to the rear property line, and so that the alley is just right there.
Okay, okay. And then I have a question about the house across the alley. It appears there is no front porch. It's, there's a stoop and an enclosed, a little portion that sticks out, and I was very clear last night. What looks to be a porch is actually part of the house. Is that true?
Um.
I don't know, I'm sure.
I believe it's an enclosed porch.
Okay. And it seems like it's heavy landscape, doesn't appear to be an outdoor space, I guess is my question.
Correct.
Is that true? Okay, okay, thanks.
All right. There are no further questions of staff. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Just so I have a sense, how many of you wish to speak on this item? I saw several of you. I'll ask the applicant to speak first and please state your name and address for the record.
Um, I've got, yeah.
If you don't mind in your presentation, address kind of the need for the variances that you're requesting.
I'm sorry.
I, I was just going to ask to, to be sure to address your perceived need for the variances that you're requesting.
Yes. It is, it is in the U.S.A.
I'm Karen Parker.
And I'm.
Go ahead.
I can introduce myself. And I'm Aaron Parker, and we live at 4511 Lindell Avenue South in Minneapolis, and I've been aware of this building for like 20 years. And when I saw that they were in there doing something, I went up and asked questions about it, and they told me what they were doing, and I asked what the story was, and they said, well, somebody's already spoken for it. But I got the number anyway and called, and there, there were actually three people in front of us, two people in front of us for this property, and the cooler heads prevailed, and it can, it wound up coming to us. We're really excited about this building, which was built in 1911. The guy who, who caused it to be built actually worked for Edison, worked with Tesla, went to Westinghouse and ran Westinghouse before he came out here. He created the first hydroelectric plant in the western hemisphere on the Falls of St. Anthony. And, and then, well, doesn't matter. Anyway, so this building has been identified as an historic, historic resource. Is this like not loading up or what's the story? And we would like to, in fact, in order to make the project viable, we have to pursue national register designation for this building. We are requesting putting in four, four units and a small co-working space that, that we will operate. Karen can speak a little bit to, to what we intend to do with that. We see ourselves as public citizens and really want to make this a, you know, a public place. Its location on the park makes that a little bit easier. I won't speak too much to the, I, I'd like to reserve time to respond to, you know, issues about, about the, the zoning change, if, if I may, if that becomes an issue. And, and rather speak to the two items that, that were denied. I, I really like to thank staff for, for their help, and I apologize for not explaining what I was doing in this, in the corner side, side yard as well. You raised some good questions as well, which I will answer if this thing ever opens. It's not opening. One of the things that, that we would like to do with this, with this project is demonstrate that, that there are types of housing between the single-family house and, and the, and the large apartment blocks, such as we're seeing developing on the north side of the Midtown Greenway, for instance, which would be wholly inappropriate to this area. The reason that we requested the OR1 is specifically because the massing and the intensity of use are in keeping with the neighborhood. This block, this property is, is a block, is this not going to do this? Is, is a block off of, off of Lindell Avenue, and, and the park itself is, I mean, the, the building is, is in the view shed from Lindell as well. So although it is in an urban, urban neighborhood, based on the comp plan, it actually participates in community corridor kind of, kind of area. And I think in, because it's on, on the edge like that, is, is important. One of the reasons I think that's important is because the Met Council says in their 2040 plan that we are expecting 825,000 new people to be here by 2040. That's 400,000 new households. If they go to the suburbs, we're going to have some big problems. Minneapolis is kind of on the, at a, at a make or break point. I think the city has done some amazing things, and we can be the best city in the country if we do our job right as private citizens and as a city. And, well, you know. Try what?
So there's an X on there. No one had thought of this. Drag a file to the test.
That X on the, that X on the, that star.
Try what?
So there's an X on there. You know what, I had saw, opened this bracket file of the star.
Oh.
Did I have, set it off?
Oh, okay. Anyway, the, let me address, as long as, there will be illustrations later, but in terms of, in terms of the patios, the patios are actually 55 square feet of paved area. I understand that they're six foot four by eight foot eight each. There are two of them. One, one has the grading so that you can actually let light into the basement and actually has a hatch to get, for egress windows from two demised spaces down there. And then the rest of that terrace, level terrace area is, is going to be landscaped. So it's, it's actually, we're at 55 square feet instead of 50, and, you know, the setbacks on the building, as you saw, are, I mean, the building is where it is. It's seven feet from the property line back to the face of the building, and, but those, those patios are south-facing, which is a benefit. And so we would like to have south-facing patios like all of the, all of the residences in the same block of 34th Street, which all face south. Even the one that's facing, on the corner facing the park, looks south. And I think, you know, that, that sort of solar advantage is something that we're looking at as, as a plus, and we'd like to, we'd like to take advantage of that. There is other landscaping around, you know, shrubs and stuff like that, at that point.
Mr. Steiner, maybe staff has a visual overview that you could use to talk through the variances while we're waiting for the presentation?
I suppose I could do some of that.
Yeah, it's in our packet. We have it in our packet.
Yeah.
There's all your plans.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. So, so that's, that's the building from, from all four sides. And, and this is, this is a figure ground showing the buildings and then, and then what's not building in black. The park, that's the property here. So you can see that this, you know, this corner and its relationship to, you know, to the park is, you know, it's a really, you know, positive kind of connection diagonally across to, to the baseball diamond. Historically, that, on the, on the left here, that this was a public well that, where people would actually come with their Red Wing jugs and, and bring, and bring water home. Similar to the public space, this happens to be Pienza, and the, the well in the, in the town square was the gathering place and so on and so forth. And we see this kind of use on, not, not that people would be coming there for water, but, but the idea of having a real sort of public space in the tradition of Fish Fest or, or a national night out or, you know, a snow angel contest after, after snowfall or community, community meal kind of thing, sorts of stuff that we've been talking about doing. Outside of what would be, this, this is the, the commercial space, which is a co-working space, which, there are a lot of home offices in, in the neighborhood in order to get a copy, Xerox someplace. You gotta get in your car and drive to Uptown now if you want, if you want to do like a large run or, or get a high-quality copy. And what we would, what we are intending is that, is that we would have access to, you know, to our machine in this location to do that as well as other, actually, I'll let Karen speak to this a little bit.
Well, our intention is to not have it just simply be, you know, equipment, that this would become somewhat of a home-based business incubator in the community, so that anybody who has a home-based business or an evolving business could come into the, the incubator space and get coaching or business development information or training. Our intention is even to have small-scale, say, trainings related to evolution of technology. So we really want to have this be not just a place where you can come and work, but a place where the economy of the neighborhood can be served and people who are looking for ways to maybe build a business, be able to balance work and family, create, you know, an independent kind of enterprise, have an opportunity to gain access to the resources they wouldn't have normally just trying to do it by themselves in their, in their living room at home. And the, you know, the, the front space would be, you know, the other part with the front space is, we really recognize that this building, particularly as the Garfield Aquarium, is, is a focal point in the neighborhood. It is, there is a community festival, and our intention with that front staircase area was to have a gathering space in the community where we could continue to at least maintain the identity of the community, even though the, obviously, the boards would come down off the windows, but we'd still be able to say, host Fish Fest or have a band play up there on National Night Out, or have this be kind of another extension of the park space.
Anything else to add?
I'm just really, sorry, I don't have the pictures because they speak so much more broadly. Yeah, one thing I, the other thing I would like to say, just, you know, on, on the topic of the OR1, is, is that I looked around at, at the neighborhood and actually one of the, one of the maps is, is pretty interesting. There are 13 commercial properties along 33rd Street from Lake Calhoun down to Nicollet, which is more than all but 36th Street and Lake Street. You know, we think about, you know, 35th as being, you know, a street, but 33rd, I was, I was quite, I found that quite amazing, and they're all kind of walking distance from one another. You can actually, some of the photographs, you can stand and, you know, outside the sort of dual guys down unpleasant and, and see all the way down, and you can see, you know, you can't see all the way to Bryant where Canteen is, but, but you can see, you know, a number of them, and this is one of those that is placed a block from the hairdresser and so forth. If, if I may, you know, reserve my time to respond.
Okay. And I assume your presentation is still copying over. Maybe we can just let it sit for a few more minutes, or maybe, Lisa, you can take, take a look at it, and that way later, if we need to refer to any of the photos or anything.
Okay.
Right. Commissioner Cronzer, do you have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, just a couple of questions for the applicant. So in the large stair at the corner, it's clearly trying to orient itself to the park, but what is north of the stairs? It looks like, is that green space or a sloping hill?
Yes.
So it's green space, and then there's, looks like a handicap ramp, and then additional green space to the north property line. Is that?
Yeah, that's, there you go.
Okay. Want to go back to the, the patios again for a minute? So the, the existing area well, that is entirely covered in a metal grate?
The existing, there are two area wells, one next to the other existing, and they're relatively small. They're, they're the ones that are hidden behind the bushes in the, in, in this photograph. You can kind of see some bushes over there, or maybe you can't, but they're there. Five, five windows down, there's, you know, and those are relatively small. There are actually masonry openings in the basement that, that are egress size, and then we'd be putting another one in a little bit further down, so there would be grading over, over both of those. So I think the, it's about 25 feet of, of grading, but the patio part would be, you know, less than half of that would be eight foot eight inches.
Okay. And that's the, that's the patio for, I think it's unit number two?
That's for...
Apartment number two?
Yeah, for apartment two.
And then the patio for apartment one is, like you said, five, 55 square feet plus landscaping around it?
Yeah, it would be grass, you know, on, on either side of it.
And then there's, there's no fencing, it's just, it's basically landscaping and hard landscaping.
Well, we would use, we would use hedging.
Hedging, yeah. Good, that clears that up. And what about bike parking? Bike, bicycle parking?
There's a dozen bicycle stalls in the three garages, and, and we have, I've, you know, I was a racing cyclist back in the day. I've been a cyclist for decades, and I'm really committed to it. In earlier schemes, we actually had a bicycle maintenance station on the property, a public bicycle maintenance station, but that kind of went away.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Commissioner Slack?
I think the, the last time we saw this proposal was very different, and at the time, I, I thought that you didn't own the property. Do you own the property now?
We are, because the property is essentially of no use without a zoning change, we didn't want to run rashly into this and buy the property and not be able to do anything with it. You can only do duplex on this property, and it's a very expensive renovation.
I guess another comment is, I appreciate the gesture of the, kind of the civic space out at the street edge. Did you look at alternatives that would fit within the setback variance to, to create that civic space without having to require a variance?
Um, yeah, I, I did, but again, the, you know, the notion of sort of reaching out, you know, towards the park, you know, it's, you know, we think, you know, the terrace holds the corner of a corner lot. The argument was made that, well, you know, it's, it's not consistent with the Garfield frontage, which is, you know, which is entirely residential. Well, a corner lot has significantly different urbanistic obligations than, than a standard mid-block lot has. It has to turn the corner properly. It has to hold the corner of the park, which you can see in, oh, is that photograph here someplace, please? It, you know, it really, you know, it really needs to hold, you know, hold the corner of the park strongly. And there it is. That's, you, you can see how the ensemble of buildings there, those, those, this building here and then our building, and then this relatively, you know, blocky mass of two-story stucco building on this side really defines the corner of, of the park. It's not, and, and to have, you know, a sort of standard, you know, single-family house in that location really erodes that spatial definition and really takes away from the definition of, of, of the park space itself. So, you know, we think, the, the whole thing about having that plaza there is that we're really reaching out towards the park in a certain way, and I wanted to go as far, and in fact, into, up to the back of the sidewalk with these stairs so that, so that you really have that, you know, that gesture and that connection. We, you know, there are obviously other things that could be done, but, you know, in, in terms of architecture and landscape, you know, notions, it, it seems to me that, you know, that this kind of, you know, over-enthusiastic response is probably not terrible.
Mr. Parker, you had, or I should say, Lisa mentioned in her staff report that the steps and plaza would also require an encroachment permit?
That's correct.
Because not, not only does it go up to the property line, but it extends into the public right of way. Do you have a sense of any utilities that are in that area, or do you have any concern about the steps? Obviously, that would be a pretty substantial investment being disrupted if, if there was a need to, to get in there for whatever reason.
Well, that's a, that's a good question, and if, you know, we're asking permission to do this. It may well turn out that, that cooler heads prevail and, and we, and we roll that back, but, you know, we're, we're asking, you know, for those permissions. In fact, you know, if, if this, you know, again, we're, this is also going to be a lot more expensive than just doing it, you know, the way we normally would, but again, this is the sort of thing that, that we think is better urbanism. And, and so that's, that's why we're asking for this, because we want to demonstrate that it's important to be responsible. It used to be. I've got, I have press clippings from 1922 where, where developers came in just a couple blocks from here and offered to build an entire linear park, you know, all the way down to, almost to Nicollet, if they would be allowed to develop the properties on either side of it. What happened to that? I mean, you know, now it's like, well, if you don't give me the tiff, I'm going to the next town. What happened?
We... Okay. Are there, yeah, maybe we should move on to some other speakers. And I understand several of you would like to speak, so we can start over at this end of the room, and I will just ask, because it is getting late, that you be mindful of not simply repeating things others have said and keep your remarks fairly brief. So who would like to go first? Go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Devin Hogan, and I'm here to recruit you. I live at 31 West 35th Street in the Lyndale neighborhood, and I am a homeowner. I've owned my house there for six years because for some reason that gives you cachet in this city. But I'm not here as a homeowner in that capacity. I'm here in the capacity as a millennial, 31 years old, and there are 83 million people in my generation, 83 million, let me repeat that, biggest generation in United States history, bigger than the Boomers and possibly the largest ever we will see. And people like me are moving to Minneapolis at the rate of 1,000 people a month, and people like me want to live in urban areas. Specifically, the reason why I moved into my neighborhood and bought my house there was, was a U of M student, had express bus lines to the U and the Nicollet bus that goes to downtown. So I was attracted to this neighborhood because of its urbanness, and as a homeowner there, I just feel like I really have no option, right? You know, I've got my five-bedroom house that's completely useless for someone like me. What am I going to do with a five-bedroom house? Even if I have two kids, five bedrooms is still too many. But I still want to stay in my neighborhood. There's no place for some... There's no place for somebody like me to go except for a proposal like this, an extremely reasonable proposal to turn a decrepit, decaying industrial property into a place that people want to live. Now, we'll probably hear from a lot of neighbors about how terrible that is to put more residences on a residential neighborhood, you know, on a residential street where residences don't belong. But I just want to strongly voice my support because there's a lot of people like me out there. And the city, I think, for its part, has been paying attention and doing the right thing. One of the things, including the, uh, parking, not having to build structured parking for units like this. And part of the reason, again, why I live in that, my neighborhood is because they don't have to have a car and I haven't had one since I've lived here. And so I just want you guys to, um, understand that of all the people like me that would support such a thing, there's probably not one in this room because we have jobs that, um, we have to work and the economy is stacked against us, so we're working all the time. So again, I just want to add my voice, say it very loudly in honor of all the people that are absent from here. And also want to say that I approve, uh, support you guys approving the variances to the side yard. Because, um, I think that as someone who plays kickball in that park, it's kind of cool to be able to just go across the street and have a vantage point and sit and watch the games and things like that. And to not really allow a simple variance such as that sort of is not very forward-thinking. You know, I think that we consider ourselves a progressive city, but, you know, it's a, I understand that there's, the, the zoning and rules exist for a reason, but that kind of, um, variance, I think, will truly bring the kind of urban character that's been missing from there all along. So that's about it. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Uh, next speaker, who would like to go next? Yes, please state your name and address.
Sure. My name is John Law. I live at thirty-two thirteen Garfield, so I'm in the block on the same side of the street as the development. I wrote a letter to Lisa, so I'm, I'm suspecting that would be included in your packet already. So I don't want to take up too much of your time. I appreciate you guys staying late. And just basically, just to reiterate, the zoning change isn't consistent with the rest of the street. It's creating an island in the middle of a residential zoning area. And I think one thing that hasn't been discussed is parking. Parking on our street, our block, is really at a premium. Past six o'clock at night, you're lucky if you can find a place to park. And that's, all the people that live on the east side of the street have garages and are utilizing them, but we have so many units, I think we have eighty-eight units, ninety-seven units on this block already. So, um, there just is no place to park. And even if you looked in some of those pictures that were up there, they were taken during the day and you'll notice cars all around that building, cars around the park. It's very difficult if any of us want to have friends over relatives, there's, they literally have to walk for several blocks to get to our homes. So I know that in this latest iteration of the, uh, the plan, there are three parking spots. And it just doesn't seem like enough. The other thing is, I think one of you iterated to or reiterated that you've seen multiple versions of this plan and those of us in the neighborhood have also seen, um, and this was, the, the version that you saw tonight was not the version that the neighborhood was presented. We were presented with a plan where there were seventeen units on this site. So we were really adamantly opposed to that. And it, it seems like, um, what would be great is for Aaron to come back, Mr. Parker to come back to the neighborhood, re-present this plan so we could get a good look at it and then maybe go forward because I think we need to talk about it as a neighborhood. This is really the first time we've seen it. And, um, again, I want to, you know, refer you guys to my, my note. But, um, I know one of the things, um, that Aaron originally told us at the meeting was he needed a million dollars to get the building back into shape to, to get it livable. And so that's why he needed those seventeen units to provide income so he could get that million dollars. So I'm not sure, um, where that money is coming from now. And maybe it's none of our business, but, um, it's just something to think about. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Yes, please state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Michael Nelson. I'm at, uh, live at thirty-four eighteen Harriet. I just wanted to talk in support of the project. In, uh, supporting the change from R two B to O R one. Given this development has that, giving the development, the zoning, uh, option will give it added flexibility to be able to be a more successful project. I think speaking to the difficulty of rehabbing a structure of this vintage and of this use in a residential, any other flexibility they can have and a way to keep it going would be greatly appreciated. While the zoning change, while it's not fully consistent with the, everybody directly around it, there is, um, like uses very close to it, it's about a block away on Lindell Avenue. There is a similar, uh, use in terms of a dentist and it was a dentist, now it's a barber. So it's been added traffic and, uh, commercial use there for quite a long time. Also, um, in regards to the variances on the corner, I would, um, ask that you support those, uh, support the variances. The, um, addition of the, uh, public plaza or extended stoop, however you want to call it on the corner, would allow them to, um, keep a better eye on the park. There's been comments about, um, crime not being seen very well in the park, but having people living there in the building and occupying that corner would actually go a great way to help monitor that. It, and in terms of the idea that this is the first time we've seen the project, this might be the first time that we've seen this iteration of the project. Aaron and Karen have been involved in a very extensive process with the neighborhoods since last summer, where unfortunately they've been subject to, uh, or we've been subject to the messy process of design, develop, design and development, where you see every single little change that happens during the whole process. And, um, Aaron and Karen have been very forthcoming in their presentation of all their plans. And I would, I would agree that this has changed extensively from the very beginning and that, uh, um, there has been extensive public engagement, uh, on this project. Also in regards to the parking, um, I walk generally from Lake Street to my house on Harriet most weeknights. Yes, when there's a kickball game going on at the park, parking is at a premium. Most nights when I walk along, the entire side of the park is open. The entire east side of the park is open and other spaces in the evening. So while parking is tight in our neighborhood, I would say that it's not impossible. And as someone who has rented in the neighborhood up in, up in the wedge where parking is way more tight, walking a few blocks is usually not a major problem for someone who's renting. So, uh, saying that, I would encourage you guys to approve the zoning change and also approve the variances. So, thank you.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address.
My name is Stan Searsen. I live at thirty-two thirty-three Garfield, the, the street from here. I have my wife and two children and I'm, for one, I'm excited about new millennial neighbors. I'm sad they have to work. However, I agree with the staff that the variances are out of character. No one believes that the steps to residents are public space. It's just not how we live. We don't live, we don't sit on the people's stoops. So I don't feel like that is a valid public space, very difficult to use. You'd feel exposed and in someone else's sort of apartment, very strange. And also I wonder whether this zoning has to go to business. It seems like actually what he's looking for is more residence to further the needs for density in the city. It seems like rezoning to, uh, residents, a higher density of residents would be a more appropriate use for the space. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Frank Allercon. I live at thirty-four fifty-five Blaisdell Avenue. I just moved into the neighborhood about four months ago after serving a couple of years in the Peace Corps. I just want to speak in favor of the project. I think, uh, you know, as a young person, I'm twenty-four years old. I'm a renter. I'll probably be a renter until I'm in my thirties. You know, I would love to see more opportunities for people like me to live in the neighborhood. I feel incredibly lucky to live in Lindale. And, uh, I think we should jump at the opportunity to turn, you know, a kind of derelict parcel into some housing for, you know, young people, young couples. And so that's why I support the project. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, yes, in the back, please state your name and address.
My name is Steve McHenry. I live at thirty-two twenty Harriet. I also have two small children. We go to the park all the time. It's kind of a tough intersection there with parking, sightlines, everything else. You know, everything I've heard here is kind of crazy. Uh, I, I'm very impressed that you guys are able to do this, uh, day in, day out, weekend, week out. So thank you for that. I've heard this presentation multiple times, probably four times. Seventeen units, office space, uh, public community space that might have a membership fee. I've heard that we, they, we don't need more than three parking spaces because everyone bikes. I bike to work every day. I have two cars. I have a garage where I put my cars. Also, it, it's just one of these things where when I hear that there are two phases to a project, but then we hear phase one now presented, I realize I can come back in a few years and I can say I don't want phase two to go forward. But as far as phase one, this seems like an awesome project. I mean, bravo to an architect. It, it looks really cool. I'd love to save this building. But as a residential building, not as office space, not as something else that can transition into some sort of commercial space. You know, we have a real strong community and anyone that has said that they're in favor of this, if you look at their address, they do not live within a couple of blocks of where we are. So I looked at where people live and who's talking. And the people that are for this don't live near Garfield and Thirty-third. The people that are against this live on Harriet and Garfield and Thirty-second and Thirty-third and Thirty-fourth. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is John Meegan. I live at thirty-two twenty-eight Harriet Avenue South. I've been there for thirty-four years. And I relish the chance to say to city and its staff, I think they did an excellent job of reviewing the presentation and the recommendations are spot on. So I'd just love to be able to compliment and say it's great to see our taxpayer dollars doing a good job. The bottom line is that as it's been presented, this is a, a good idea, a nice plan. But what we worry about in the neighborhood is that once the zoning changes, what conditions are there that the other components of this plan will actually be what's executed? I would say that I am personally very suspicious of the push for an O R one designation because with what little I know about commercial real estate or home values, the one workspace that's part of this plan should not significantly change the financial pro forma for this building. And I think that the arguments for making a community space or a, a community resource for copy machines is weak at best. This is what makes me suspicious. If Mr. Parker has not purchased this property yet, does this open the door for a developer's fee to acquire the property, give up on these plans and then sell it to somebody else for a higher price? And then the neighborhood starts over with someone who has an O R one designation that can push to the max what's being presented so that what we end up with is not the plan that we see here today, but the plan of the next developer who actually has the deep pockets to make this happen. We know this building can't be just a, a two-unit duplex. It has to be changed. So, you know, I understand the comprehensive plan. I think the recommendations are spot on. But somebody should be able to protect the neighborhood that what we are supporting in this package is what we receive as a package and that we don't just turn over the designation to somebody who then changes everything that's been presented in front of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, yes, next speaker.
Colin Convy, thirty-three fifteen Garfield. So I'm one of the neighbors that lives near it. I want to say that we really have looked at this plan a lot. And as you probably know from your notes, the neighborhood has resoundingly said no to this. And we did it at a standing room only neighborhood meeting, mostly because of the zoning. We don't need it to be rezoned to commercial. We are off of Lindale, which is a very fine commercial area. We're off of Grand, which is a very fine commercial area. And what's the beauty of our neighborhood is that we have residential space that is residential. And we have commercial space that we preserve for commercial use. And so just throwing commercial in the middle of our very small residential space jeopardizes the commercial corridors and it jeopardizes our residential space. We have voted to say no to this because of the zoning variation. We don't need it. The public space we have, we don't need a privately held public space. We have a beautiful pub space in Painter Park. We have a parkhouse. We have many public spaces. We don't really need someone to come into our neighborhood and give us a public space. We don't want the rezoning. We want it to, we love the building and we love it to be residential. So if it was all residential, the neighborhood would be fully supported. The rezoning is a significant change and it will be a significant change for our neighborhood. We've done a lot to create our neighborhood, to bring our neighborhood back. We really want zoning to protect us. That's why we have zoning and we want you to protect our neighborhood.
Thanks. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Bryce Pierre. I live at thirty-two twenty-four Harriet, so I'm just across the alley and down from this property. I first want to say Lindale has no lack of affordable housing units, either rental or for ownership. We have lots and lots of, um, thirty thousand dollar condos, et cetera. So if people are looking for, uh, density units to own or rent, we have them already. Furthermore, although the currently submitted development plan from Mr. Parker is reasonable for the lot structure that already exists, sorry, uh, Mr. Parker has publicly and privately shared at least six different iterations of his plan. These plans varied from four units to seventeen units in two large structures, which he proposed to the Neighborhood Association this fall and which the Neighborhood Association voted not to support. In every conversation about his plan in the past year, Mr. Parker has stated that there's no possible way to make the project work financially without additional units over the four proposed now. He has frequently referred to creating four to six units in the existing structure as phase one and an additional building of more units as phase two. If Mr. Parker's granted the O R one zoning change, there's little to nothing the neighbors or neighborhood would be able to do to prevent the second phase of development from happening. The co-working space in this plan is actually designed as a nine-hundred-square-foot residential unit. Mr. Parker has stated in the past that the co-working concept does not work out, that they will rent the unit out as such. This shows that an R three rezoning, which would limit the future development of the lot to seven units, is a viable alternative to the requested O R one. In addition, a change of zoning is permanent. If the developer requesting this change does not yet own, it's like, the developer, Mr. Parker, does not yet own this property. If the O R one zoning is granted and the sale falls through, Excel Energy, if I'm not mistaken, would have an eleven thousand square foot lot that would become much more valuable to them and attractive to other developers who could build the exact type of development the Lindell Neighborhood Association opposed and voted on the developers' larger plans this fall. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, uh, next speaker. Yes, please state your name and address.
Bob Weedman, thirty-two thirty-three Harriet. Just about a half block away from the site. This is not the plan that was presented to the neighborhood, neighborhood group. The plan that was presented to the neighborhood group was seventeen units. Compared to this plan, uh, Mr. Parker might as well have presented a ham sandwich. This is not, um, what we discussed. If there's any kind of a process here, um, uh, that involves neighborhood involvement, you know, this is, this is not what we, this is not what we talked about. Our, our main concern here, um, the neighbors that you're hearing from, is that this is basically a bait and switch. You guys are seeing a, a four-unit, um, uh, development. And, you know, you see all this, there's discussion about parking, right? Well, you know, there are four units, you know, how much parking is that? You know, Mr. Parker has presented seventeen units, um, with three parking spaces. That's what he presented to the neighborhood group. Once the, once the zoning is changed, there is nothing, um, that will keep him from building what he says is phase two, right? And phase two is the building of the second building, um, which basically takes up the entire, uh, second lot. There's no green space. There's no, uh, you know, open area. There's no community space. Maybe it's not. Maybe he's, you know, maybe he's, you know, I mean, he's personally, he's, he has said in these meetings that there's no way that he can financially do this. The numbers don't work without the seventeen units, right? I hope you'll ask him what changed. Because, you know, frankly, it's, it's looking like a bait and switch to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this? We relish to just give, give everyone one opportunity to speak. If there are none, I'll close the public hearing. Yeah, maybe, Lisa, do we know if the presentation ever came up, if there's anything the applicant All right. Commissioners, are there any further questions or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Bender.
Thank you. I just had some questions. I wanted to make sure that, so this rezoning is just for the one parcel, not for both? Is that correct?
It is just one parcel. It's the size of two typical lots, but it's just one parcel. That's 11,000 square feet.
Okay. So the rezoning does include the site that is a vacant space?
Correct.
Okay. And then I wanted to understand, we had had some dialogue previously about the rezoning, which again isn't a quasi judicial application, unlike variances and conditional use permits. And I also connected with the Eighth Ward Council Office about that. And so I wondered, you had helped me understand the differences between R2, R3, and OR1 because I did understand that there was some concern from the neighborhood about the OR zoning classification. So my understanding is that the building would be allowed, there are no real bulk differences or setback variance differences between those two zoning classifications and that if, if this was rezoned to R3 instead of OR1, for example, that the difference would be the co-working space would not be allowed. Is that correct? Or could you talk more about those two zoning classifications?
Sure. So between R3 and OR1? So the main form difference for buildings between R3 and OR1, obviously the use difference is the major difference between the two. But the main form differences are if you had a multifamily dwelling in OR1, that would have a maximum floor area ratio of 1.5, whereas in R3 it would have a maximum floor area ratio of one. The difference between the setbacks, the setbacks are identical between the side yards and the rear yards. However, the front yard, the front yard requirement is 20 feet in R3 and 15 feet in OR1. So those are the only differences for form as far as the minimum lot area requirements. R3 would have a minimum lot area requirement. So that would be 1,500 square feet per dwelling unit, which would mean that the site could only have a maximum of seven units without a lot area variance. However, OR1 does not have that similar restriction of minimum lot area.
Thank you. And then is there any way for someone to use, so if it was zoned R3, is there an opportunity to use that space at all as like a home office or for that space to be available to the residents of the building? I understand that it wouldn't be able to be used as a co-working space, but is there any flexibility within the R3 classification to still have some kind of business there or not?
There are, the city does have regulations for home occupations and so there's certain restrictions about how many people are coming and going and other regulations. But that's basically, people can also run businesses out of their homes, subject to certain restrictions.
Commissioner Rockwell.
Just a quick follow-up. So the, the co-working office space would not be allowed even under a variance? Is that, that's correct? In an R3?
Correct. So an office is not, is essentially, it is a prohibited use in residential districts.
Right.
Correct. So you would not, there wouldn't even be an option for a conditional use permit?
Well, yeah, no, I know there's not an option for a conditional use permit, but you can't seek a variance either.
No, there are no use variances.
Right. Okay. Sorry.
Do you have a sense of how much? So, I'm not. So in 900 square feet, how many sort of office spaces one would be able to fit in that amount of space or?
Yeah, so a 900-square-foot space, if you can imagine, it's kind of a typical one-bedroom apartment. The floor plans were not extremely detailed, but it kind of looked like one conference room and maybe a couple of different office spaces and sounds like a copier. So it's a fairly small unit. I should also note that it's, because it's under 1,000 square feet, it has no parking requirement.
And Commissioner Bender, you had a question for the applicant?
I wanted to ask the applicant how you would use that space if we rezoned to R3 instead of OR.
I'm sorry, again?
If the Planning Commission or the council recommend, approved of rezoning to R3 instead of the OR zoning, how would you use that 900 square feet instead of for a co-working space? And is that, I mean, is that, I mean, it's hard for me to imagine that that's helping the project pencil with that small amount of space. So it seems like an amenity and I don't want to question sort of your motivation about why you're doing it. It sounds cool. But I do understand particularly since the zoning carries to both spots and if there is an intention to continue with future development, you know, it's worth considering. Is, is the OR zoning appropriate?
We think the OR is appropriate because we, first of all, in order to make this property viable at all, we have to have historic designation. If we don't, it doesn't work. You know, we, you, you go through and you try it this way and you try it that way, you know, I have, I have to say, well, let me answer your question first because, or maybe that's all, let's just answer the question. We think that, that that sort of co-office space is, is something that, that's very, very appropriate for that location because there are lots of other small commercial properties all the way along that street, as I indicated before. We have heard a lot from the neighborhood and we've talked to a lot of people in the neighborhood who do support this project, people who live within blocks and would, and would use this, this co-office, co-working space. And, and we think, the other thing is that because, because of the monumental character of that entrance, it really demands a, you know, more of a public kind of, kind of expression which, which commercial provides. The houses are accessed from the, you go, you go up that ramp on the, on the back. Access is, access to the houses is, is in this little box here going up the ramp. This is the entrance, is the entrance to the, to the co-working space. And we see that as being, you know, really, you know, two different things. It's, you know, it's, it's pretty important. The OR1 just, you know, just recognizes that. And, and it is, it is, you know, pretty important to, you know, to what we want to do. So, you know, we think that, that it's, you know, that's an important piece.
Mr. Wittenberger.
Thank you. Just to remind commissioners, there is a table in the attachments that, that makes it clear that there are a very limited number of commercial uses allowed in OR1. A former city council member used to say that OR stood for overly restrictive and OR1 is particularly restrictive. You, you can't open a general, a neighborhood serving retail sales and service use. So nobody will be selling music or, or clothing or hardware or anything from, from a retail store. Or one is simply not allowed. You need the OR2 in a mixed-use building to, to do that. So just be cautious of thinking of OR1 as, as a commercial district because there are very few non-residential uses actually allowed in the district.
And I did read the zoning book to figure that out because we did, you know, we have, you've heard that we presented six or seven times to the neighborhood and I'm really not a masochist. But the reason is because we wanted to engage the neighborhood in this. We thought that we would have partners in doing this. And, and we shared, probably more than we should have, we shared financials with a small task force that was, that was put together by the previous executive director. The people that understood real estate supported the project. The people who didn't did not support the project. And we have come back, you know, all these times, do you like this? Is this okay? And so on and so forth. The bottom line is that, you know, they, they don't. There are a number, a number of people who do and the Housing Committee actually voted in favor of this project. So.
Commissioner McGree.
Yeah. And so just to be clear, I mean, the things that were presented at the neighborhood meetings a year ago really have no bearing on the applications that we're looking at right now. I mean, we have an application before us. It is legally binding and forcible and all that. So I guess I wouldn't worry too much about that part. I did have a quick question for the applicant. You know, I'm looking at the corner here, sort of this big plaza area, which, you know, I guess I'm wondering what all is going to be there? I mean, I, I'm a millennial. I don't know. I, you know, I don't know if we're just going to have like, I don't know if we're, you know, bands there all. I don't know. I just see that kind of just being like a windswept and empty a lot of the time. And so I'm not really, you know, if you maybe did something there landscaping-wise or if you'd be open to, I was in a committee of the whole for this project when it did come up some number of months ago. And I, I just see that kind of being empty, you know, maybe a tree or something in lieu of that would be easier and then you wouldn't even need the variance.
It's a really, it's an excellent point and it needs to be designed. It hasn't really been designed yet, you know, except for the, except for the stairs reaching out. It's actually, where we are at this point is gestural and I didn't want to put the time into doing that, although I have, into actually doing the design until we were sure we were going to move forward with the project. But yeah, absolutely. It needs to be programmed properly. It needs to, it needs to be designed properly to have, you know, the sorts of amenities that, you know, people after a ballgame might come across and, you know, and hang out and watch from behind the, the backstop or, you know, or whatever. People that, I, I lived in New York for a long time in a, in a former convent across the street from a church. And all night long with the windows open all summer long, we would hear, you know, a couple sitting on the stairs on the other side of the street and doing that. People say that nobody sits on residential stoops, but the building directly across the street from this property is, you know, more often than not, when I go by, somebody's sitting out there talking to somebody on, on that little stoop that's there.
And so sort of going on that, maybe a question for Mr. Wittenberger for staff. You know, I think the applicant had said that they're still working on some of the design details before going ahead with site plan review. But is it sort of odd that we're not doing that concurrently or is it just because it's a small project and so we wouldn't, wouldn't see that? It's sort of hard to maybe put conditions on some of the variances without seeing ultimately what this is going to look like when it gets built?
Correct. So the project actually doesn't require site plan review because it's only four units. And I guess that answers your question.
Yeah, that's, thank you.
But further correct, the plans are not fully developed. Any large or any significant changes would require coming back, but they're generally kind of more conceptual drawings than you typically, typically see, but they're, they're well, they're good enough to come.
Yeah. That answers my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Cronster.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation for the rezoning from RTB to the OR1 district.
Is there a second? You have a motion and a second on approving the rezoning. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, just like to speak to my motion for a minute. You know, this is a very unique project. It's a, it's a neighborhood landmark, either officially or unofficially. You know, the National Night Out that I walked past last, last fall is right here. This is a very public building. It's a kitty corner from the full neighborhood park. It's extremely visible for Lindell Avenue. In fact, I was driving past it yesterday. I drive past every day. And so the yellow stick, orange stickers on the door, you know, I'm going, sorry, 20 miles an hour, not looking where I'm going, but knowing that we are seeing this, you know, that this building is very much anchors the corner of that large full-block public So while it is in a raised, well, it's a mixed neighborhood. There's single-family houses, there's apartment buildings. I feel this, there's, there's, as staff's laid out, the, the policy in the, in the comp plan clearly supports small businesses and business incubators and a whole slew of historic preservation goals as well. So I think that this project has lived up to that, that policy guidance.
Commissioner Rockwell.
Yeah, I just want to speak very briefly to it as well. I, I will support the motion, but only after Mr. Wittenberg's encouragement to look at what OR1 actually is once again, which I'm looking at in front of me. And it, it really doesn't allow for businesses, you know, it allows for early childhood learning center, community garden, you know, that some live performance space, stuff like that, office, you know, and there are childcare centers sprinkled throughout the neighborhood. I live in Lindell, so this is my neighborhood and this is my park and I'm there many, many times a week with my child. And I now have three children, so I'll be there even more. And, and, you know, I, I do think that this building is, is, it's visible from the park and it feels part of the park, the small retail around the park. You know, it's all part of that. You know, on, on one corner, there's a number of retail, but then there's the small haircutter just a, you know, half block from this site. They are on Lindell Avenue, but, but the park is this focal point. And this is not, as presented, a large development and it can't be a large development under the code because this development is, is proposed, you know, up to, within two feet of the maximum height in OR1. So I just wanted to speak a little bit to that, that I do think this, this connects to the park and is, is a part of the community. It's a focal point for the community and the neighborhood's Fish Fest and so forth. And I would not vote for it if I thought there, if there were a possibility of some wildly out-of-character uses. And I just, I just look at the, you know, OR1, I'm, I'm looking at it right now and it just is not, it's not much different than what's allowed in residential. That's, you know, we've got childcare centers throughout in residential and that's about the most offensive thing in here. And it's in front of a park, so that's an appropriate use. So.
It allows more residential units.
Thank you.
It allows more residential units, which I believe is a good thing.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, first I wanted to say, we often, I often hear complaints that all new residential projects look the same and they're the same sort of cookie cutter thing. And I think that happens when we have only bigger developers developing in the city. So I want to thank you and commend you for taking on a challenging project and being somebody who, I don't know for sure, but I think isn't, you know, hasn't maybe done a lot of development projects in the past. And I think I would like to see more of that in a city. And sometimes, you know, maybe you don't have the same like kind of lawyers and PR team that some of the bigger developers have when they go to the neighborhood meetings and, and the Planning Commission. But, you know, that kind of goes along with the benefits of having folks who have unique perspectives, who have different talents, who can bring forward more creative projects developing in the city. And again, I think that's a good thing. And I think if we have more of that, we'll have, we'll see neighborhoods be happier with the development that we get overall in the city. You know, I'm hearing, you know, some concern from the neighborhood. I know you've been many times about some of these details, perhaps, and there will be time here before the project has to come to the, the city council for approval for the rezoning. That's automatic. And there may be time within there to, to work out some of those final details in, with the neighborhood, if that's possible. The rezoning, you know, I initially, my concern had to do with the overall lot and looking at the OR zoning for, for, you know, the, the whole area. Again, though, looking at the use classifications, I think the argument is compelling that there really aren't significant differences. there really aren't significant differences between the OR and the R3, OR1 and R3. So I'm able to support the rezoning at this time. I do think some of these landscaping questions and the yard, we'll talk about the yard setbacks in a second, maybe have some work to do before it's ready.
All right. Commissioner Rockwell?
And I had one other just auxiliary thought, which was, you know, I think as the neighborhood wants to preserve the character of this site, you know, working together to, to make this a historic designation, you know, locks that in. It locks it in no matter who the landowner is. And, and so I found that compelling. It's not historic right now. It's a slack, it'd be a lot easier if it were already, but it's not. So, you know, that's, that's a path to really lock the character of the site in for the foreseeable future.
All right. And we have a motion and a second on approving the rezoning. There is no further discussion. Clerk, please call a roll.
Aye.
Gusselman?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Six zero.
We have three more applications before us. Commissioner Cronzer, would you like to continue? All right.
Excuse me. I'd like to move approval of the conditional use permit to increase the maximum height with the two stated conditions.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the conditional use permit? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Gusselman?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Six zero.
And we have two setback variances. Commissioner Magrino, would you like to take a stab at that?
Yeah, your question for Mr. Wittenberg. If we were to deny both of these, does that by any chance prevent the applicant from coming back in six months or a year if he has a more flushed-out sort of plan?
Commissioners, our practice is that they, within a year, can't bring us back the exact same thing, but they could certainly come back at any point and propose a revised plan in some fashion or certainly the same plan after a year.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Cronzer?
Well, let's, let's try to see if we can, if we can do this today. I'd like to move approval of C site, sorry, variance to reduce the required front yard setback along Garfield with one condition, and that is work with staff to provide planters or other means of greening on the landing.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, let's see if we have a second first. We have a motion and a second.
Okay. So, you know, the practical difficulty I see here is reusing existing structure. It's not even really a building. It's a industrial, I don't know, screen. I mean, it is a building, has a roof, has windows. You know, the floor level is about two feet above grade. Most apartment buildings are built with floors very close to the sidewalk. So there is a grade change here that's, you know, the applicant did not produce himself and, or under herself. As far as the stair goes, as far as the design, the character of, of the design and of the general vicinity, the stairs clearly aren't oriented towards the park and it, and it would very much support that OR1 use just inside the building. You know, going, you know, either direction, across the street, it's a four, three or four-story apartment building, going north, there's a quite, quite a large separation between the end of this design stair and the first single-family house. It's probably in a 60-some feet or more. So, you know, it's just really orienting the building back to the corner, towards the park in the way I see it.
All right. Commissioner Rockwell?
And, you know, I see the practical difficulty as really being about the park orientation. This is a park and I think that this helps orient the building towards the park. The, you know, having some of that sort of frontage pushed towards that park, you know, the chair, the salon a block away does a little bit of, it's much smaller, it's a very small little building, but it has kind of a wraparound sidewalk and, and, you know, what is for its scale, kind of a patio that pushes towards the park. And I think that helps it not only orient towards Lyndale, but also towards the park. So I just wanted to add that, since this is going contrary to, to staff recommendation, that that is what I, my practical difficulty analysis was.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the variance for the front yard setback along Garfield Avenue with one condition, that the applicant work with staff to provide greening through planters or other landscaping on that plaza. If there's no further discussion, clerk, please call a roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gusselman?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Six zero.
And item D, Commissioner?
I'd like to. I'll start over since the mic wasn't on. A variance, a motion to approve the variance for the front yard setback along West 33rd Street with one condition, that being the two patios should be limited to 60 square feet each and to work with staff to create a landscape plan in the remaining areas that are soil, including a landscaped area between the patio and the alley, that eastern, 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 eastern patio.
All right. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Cronzer?
Just really quickly, I think with some additional landscaping, those, those patios almost feel like front porches. I know my neighbor's front porch is 12 feet from my edge of my front porch. We get along. It's great. And given the fact that the house across the alley, there is an alley, there's a house, but there doesn't appear to be any outdoor space at that house. I mean, it's, it's a front porch, it's a, it's a enclosed house, steps, small stoop. So it's fairly limited in its impact, if any, to that parcel.
Okay. So again, we have a motion to approve the variance for the setback along 33rd Street with the condition that the patios are limited to 60 square feet each and that the applicant work with staff on a landscaping plan for areas in that setback area, including the area between the patios and the alley. Commissioner Rockwell?
Sorry. I think we need to establish the practical difficulty, which I see is the same as, as the prior variance, but there we are.
I would, I would also add, adding eyes on the street. I think, yeah, right now that's a pretty long blank wall that has no activity. Having some outdoor space will help create some of our septic policies.
All right. If there is no further discussion, clerk, please call a roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gusselman?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Six zero.
All right. And that concludes our discussion on, that motion carries, that concludes our discussion on this item. I did realize about three and a half hours ago, we did not have a motion to continue item five to January 25th. So would someone mind making a motion? Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Okay, we have our bases covered there. So we can adjourn. We have committee of the whole on Thursday.